All right, good morning. This is day three of our budget discussions. We'll consider ourselves back in session. Accept the motion on the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Second.
That'll be our roll call. And just so everyone's aware, Mr. Farley contacted me yesterday. He's not going to be able to make it for personal reasons. But he is fine, everything's okay, but he's just not going to be able to be here today. We'll now vote on the motion on the floor, which is the agenda. Mr. Owens.
We're voting on the motion.
I think I'll try again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Voting on the motion to confirm the agenda.
Hit confirm one more time, Mr. Hammond, it didn't go through. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Morrow?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me this morning. I want to take a few minutes to give a general overview for our viewers and new folks on our department. Our Health Department here in Pitt County has been in existence since 1917 and operates under the direction of the eleven-member Volunteer Board of Health who are appointed by you, the commissioners. Seven members are appointed according to their professions, and we have three at-large members and one county commissioner that sit on the board of health. The members of the Board of Health currently are Dr. Keith Ramsey, a physician, who's chair, he works at the ECU School of Medicine, Dr. Judith Kirkendall, nurse, is vice-chair, Jeff Wilson, our engineer, Dr. Lady Acock, the optometrist, Mr. Glenn Webb, our commissioner, Dr. D.H. Taylor, the dentist, Tina Dixon is an at-large member who works for Vitat Medical Center, Vincio Peralta represents the Hispanic community as an at-large member, and Mr. Porter Stokes is an at-large member. Dr. Mark Hayes is our veterinarian, and our newer member is Dr. Nitesh Patadar, who's a pharmacist here in the community. We have five divisions: environmental health, personal health, WIC nutrition, health education, and administration. I want to let y'all know that just last month, we completed our accreditation site visit by the North Carolina Local Health Department Accreditation Board. We were tested on nearly 150 various criteria by four site visitors, and we scored 100%.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. There are not many health departments that do that across this state, so I'm extremely proud, and you should be too, of our public health staff and the long hours of work that they put in to make this possible. We also couldn't have done this without all of our community partners and the support of this board, but we will be presented with accreditation certification next Friday at this time. We want to be the best health department in North Carolina, and we want Pitt County to be the healthiest county in North Carolina. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the new county health rankings show us moving in the wrong direction, unfortunately. Under the health factors category, we dropped from 34th out of 100 counties to 44th last year, so we have lots of work yet to do. I did receive good news yesterday that we were selected by the National Association of Counties to participate in their County Health Learning Challenge grant, so you'll be hearing more about this in the near future as we get more additional information. This picture is our main location, which is north of the river in the Pitt County Office Park off of North Green Street. Our Environmental Health Division is located in the old Hill-Burton Health Department building here on West Fifth Street, and we also operate a Smile Safari Dental Clinic at the elementary schools in the county. And during the summer, when the schools are out, we operate this clinic either at the Boys and Girls Club or take it to the Health Department and operate it there. We also operate our WIC program, which is the Women, Infants, and Children Supplemental Food Program. We have satellite sites around the county a couple of days per month where we operate that voucher program for healthy foods for mothers and children up to age five who are financially and medically eligible. So currently, we have 37 cost centers under the Health Department. It includes communicable disease programs like TB, sexually transmitted infections, WIC, I just mentioned, environmental health services for children, pregnant, breastfeeding women, immunizations, diabetes, and cancer. Now, public health is often called "the quiet miracle" because much of what we do goes unnoticed. Just in this year, with the Ebola issue, we haven't had a single case of Ebola in Pitt County or even a single case in North Carolina, but the public health has spent much time and effort tracking, tracing, and monitoring travelers that had potential exposures to Ebola in Africa. We do the same type of thing with tuberculosis and other diseases. This is how we prevent the spread of infections. If we do our job really well, nobody gets sick. The public doesn't typically see this work we do to prevent disease. We are the preventive health professionals. Many folks are now interested in preventive health because they realize just how much money it can save. We've been doing it for nearly 100 years here at Pitt County Public Health Department. So our budget. Where we are this year, in our current budget year, we had $9.7 million budgeted in revenues as of March 31st, that's about at the end of the third quarter, we've got $6.7 million revenues collected. As you can see, that includes some revenues that are not yet received but should be. In terms of expenditures, we're at $6.4 million expended at the end of March, so revenues over expenditures is $320,449. This year, we budgeted $371,466 of restricted fund balance to support our ongoing operations. As of July of last year, when we started this fiscal year, the Health Department had $1.2 million of restricted fund balance. Based on current projections, we should finish this fiscal year without using any of the Health Department's restricted fund balance. So next year, this is our requested budget for '15-'16 fiscal year, $9.6 million. This is the budget originally recommended and approved by our Board of Health. As you can see, it's a balanced budget and represents an increase of $88,420 from last fiscal year's adopted budget. Merit increase, the merit increase, which is in this proposed requested budget, would have been approximately $170,000, but because of staff retirements we had this year, this additional amount was actually decreased by $82,000. We have no net changes in requested FTEs or full-time equivalents for positions in the proposed budget. We're eliminating one and a half FTEs in our WIC program due to reduction in federal funding. We're replacing .5 FTE clerical position that supports the Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program with a full-time position, half of which is supported by state grant funding. We are requesting to add one FTE to support the business office staff. The net increase in county funding related to the FTE changes is only $10,326 due to the fact that we would be able to eliminate temporary part-time staff in the business office if this additional FTE is approved. Proposed revenues, you can see, we have $2.4 million from state and federal grants, county provides $4.4 million, 1.5 million in fees and charges. Our fund balance, as I mentioned, $371,000 is budgeted. And miscellaneous, that's grants, miscellaneous revenue primarily represents private grants supporting child services, nurse-family partnership, breastfeeding, farmers' market, and diabetes programs. We have several grants from the Vitat Medical Center Foundation. They've been very generous with helping us do some of this work here. Our proposed expenditures, as you can see there, about 78% of our expenditures are in Medicaid cost settlement, we are anticipating receiving additional Medicaid cost settlement funds in June of this year at approximately the same amount we received last year. That's settling on 2013. Have to calculate that a little bit. So that, we're settling up, basically a year behind on those settlements. We have budgeted $534,000 of the Medicaid cost settlement dollars to cover the operations of Medicaid programs in which it was earned. Our restricted fund balance, our present fund balance, as I mentioned, is $1.2 million. This has to be spent in the Medicaid programs in which it was earned. In 2015-'16, we've budgeted $371,000 to support the Medicaid programs, and this represents approximately 30% of current fund balance available. So an overview of our proposed budget, the requested budget does include the planned merit increase. We've got no net change in the total full-time equivalents and positions, and we have a significant amount of grant funds that will continue to look for additional grants that we can use instead of using county dollars to pay for these services here in Pitt County. In terms of grant-funded programs, we've got over $2.4 million currently in grants brought into the county. We pass some of those grant dollars to other agencies in the county. We pass $250,000 of state funding to Vitat Medical Center to help fund the school nurses in Pitt County schools. Just this year, we got an additional grant for $134,000 that we passed to the Vitat Injury Prevention Program to help create safe routes to schools for children in the region. We pass state money also to Picasso, that's a Pitt County Aid Service Organization, to help local people with HIV or AIDS, as is just some examples of the things that we're doing. We also receive grants, as I mentioned, from the Vitat Medical Center Foundation. We've got a grant from Martin-Pitt Partnership for Children, United Way, and in addition, some grants like local service clubs like Kowanis and Rotary that give us grants for other various projects. We don't let these grant-funded programs migrate to county funding without your permission. We are working on electronic medical records. This has been a long tedious process. We're probably one of the last departments in the state to move to electronic medical records, but we do have to move to them. We have recently made the decision to adopt the Epic system. That's probably the largest electronic medical record system in the United States. It's the same one that's used by Vitat Medical Center as well as the ECU School of Medicine Clinics. So our plan is to use our Medicaid cost settlement funds to help cover the cost of this new system, and we will be applying for additional federal grant dollars to assist in funding this as they become available. We're also working with a local project called MEND, M-E-N-D, which is under the Pitt County Health Education Foundation, and that is working with area faith-based organizations, helping to pull the various free clinics, like the one at Oakmont Church and the Homeless Shelter Clinic, pull all those together around the same electronic medical record system, and they're going to be using the Epic system also. So that'll, the same electronic health record system will help connect these clinics with the Health Department, the hospital, and the medical school, and help assure that the care of the people that the people receive is well-coordinated and more efficient. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Our mission at the Health Department is to protect, promote, and assure the health of all the people in Pitt County. Would just add that a healthy county is a wealthy county. Health is critical to our economic future, and we want to improve our health here in Pitt County. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Morrow, and the fine job that your department does and all the dollar stretching that you do. We really appreciate that from our end. And we'll start with Mr. Garris.
I don't have any questions. I do have an observation. You have presented us with an opportunity that we are very unfamiliar with. We have very limited experience in knowing how to manage this, and that is, your requested budget for 2015 and '16 is $81,000 less than your 2014 and '15 budget. Now, that is an opportunity that we are excited about managing, but we do not have a whole lot of experience in it, but we accept it and we appreciate it. Very rarely do we get a budget request less than the previous year. You've mentioned several things that your department is doing. They're all positive, and I won't go in and list them all again, but I do want to express our appreciation to you and your organization for what you do for the health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McGlaughlin?
I want to thank you, Dr. Morrow, and I'm a firm believer that nothing takes the place of the health and well-being of the citizens of Pitt County and the employees, and I think your department is doing a very excellent job in that respect. And I noticed that your grant funding, you continue to do that. Do you have any ideas to what percentage of grant funding that you are proposing to do in terms of pursue in reference to your budget for this year?
I think right now, we're at 9%.
Okay.
And I think... That's what's proposed.
Right, and I think that's always a good thing in terms of collaborating with these other agencies, and it seems like they don't have a problem in joining forces with you in terms of trying to, Vitat Health and United Way and the other agencies to try to pursue grants, so I think that's a good thing, and thank you for all you do.
We couldn't do it without him. Thank you, Commissioner Swar.
I will have to say ditto to everything that's been said over here, particularly Mr. Garris's remarks. I will have to say that in the years that I have been on this board during budget workshops, I don't anticipate coming to hear your presentation along with your finance people and your board and the people that you work with with any trepidation. I always kind of look forward to it because it's always a good report on what you did the year before, and you're already planning strongly for the next year. I think sometimes, like you said, I forgot exactly what your quote was, it's kind of a hidden...
A quiet miracle.
Yes, a quiet miracle that we're able to do this, particularly for the citizens of Pitt County that need the services of the Health Department. But on top of that, it's all the citizens in the county that benefit from the work you all do, because what you do for those citizens helps our whole community be more healthy and more able to hold down a job, have childcare, and it just goes on and on. So I do appreciate so much. I'm always amazed when you come back during the year with all of the grants, as Commissioner McGlaughlin said. I know that many of our other departments do that, but I think you all get the gold star every year. You come back almost, at least every other meeting, maybe with grant money that you all have found or that you're working on, and I think you're constantly working on that. And you brought $2.4 million up to this date in grants to Pitt County, and that's this year, right?
This year.
This past year. That's amazing. Thank you. Continue on with good work, and I looked at, we have a sheet that shows where we've, you know, what we have allotted to each department and each part of our money that we have, our pot, and we very seldom see the request to match the budget. So thank you very much for all you do.
Mr. Owens?
Good management, Doc. Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Coles?
Same. Thank you.
Williams?
I appreciate all you do for the citizen of Pitt County. It has been an enlightenment to get to know what the Health Department does for the citizen as we have met and worked and talked. I have only one question that may relate to yours. This body know I ask a lot of questions. I see I'm not the smartest one up here, but I want to say to you that have there been any... I have had a very diverse exposure in my life, but the ventilation system of the employees in the county system, do you have someone on your staff, because I know that you have a split department from knowing this, that group over there is yours as well as the one across the river, right? Do you have someone on your staff who checks and verifies the ventilation system of employees?
Of the county buildings?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean?
You know, certain things grow in air and moisture. Do you have a report on that as it relates to the ventilation system?
We don't have...
Because if they are healthy, they will stay here a long time and work hard for you guys.
Right, right. We do not have an industrial hygienist, which is typically the type of trained person that does those types of checks on ventilation systems, looking for mold and mildew, those types of things. We have consulted with industrial hygienists from the State Health Department to come in, and we did our building a few years ago. We've done some of the other county buildings in the past that have had concerns about that, so we have connections with people who do that. We just don't employ them here in the county.
Do you have, when is the last time they've done it?
I can't remember. I'd have to go back and look. Some of the county engineering folks have also been involved in that.
I think I had that about three years ago.
Three years ago, is what Mr. Reed says for the Health Department.
Perkins-Williams, if I can interject, on a case-by-case basis, as needed, we'll start with, you know, right now, all of our HVAC needs are outsourced to Piedmont Service Group. We'll have them come in and look at it. Also, buildings and grounds will come in and look at it. We consult with environmental health, as Dr. Morrow said. As he said also, we bring in the state industrial hygienist as necessary. We've even gone on a case-by-case basis, if someone is really claiming there's some environmental condition, on a very rare occasion, we will bring in an outside air quality person to do the whole litany of this. We've done that in the past six months in one particular building, as the employee was complaining about environmental conditions, and the building came up entirely clear on all the different factors.
Thank you.
But there are occasions where you might have a roof leak that has caused some bacteria or something to grow, and we fix the leak, address the inside issue, and then everything's good.
Thank you. I know you're curious about why I asked that question. I could see it all in the back of your eyeballs. The reason is because I can remember going to work, and my eyes used to swell up once I got to work, and my allergies got worse, and I just knew something was growing in the vents, and I talk with some people about the history of buildings, and if it's old, certain parts, you put on a new part, and then the old part gets unnoticed because a new part looks good, smell good, and seems good, but the old part gets left, and the people who go in the old part develop health issues as it relates to allergies and stuff that are airborne and ventilation. That's why I asked that, Scott, because a healthy person works...
Absolutely.
...without sickness.
And I can say, I've been here 18 years, and the improvements that I've seen just in our buildings have been wonderful, and it's really thanks to the manager and the buildings and grounds folks, and they've done a lot of really good work. We're continuing to make improvements. We just replaced some carpet, you know, carpet is one of the things that's difficult to clean, particularly in clinical areas, and can harbor mold and mildew. We're in eastern North Carolina. We're going to have mold and mildew. I don't care where you live, I know I got it in my house, and you just can't get rid of it completely, but...
Our family is very sensitive to respiratory issues. I've had three people die of asthma and that sort of thing, and we are very conscious of airborne things. Thank you so much for your great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Hammond, do you have any questions of Dr. Morrow?
No.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a...
Mr. Manager.
...a comment briefly. In your binder packet on page 12, where we give the expenditure summary by fund and by every department, I do want to echo your comments about it. It has been a pleasure to work with Health Department, and their proposed budget is very in line with what we're trying to accomplish in keeping the base budget. But I did want you to be aware that when we look at the percent increase in the second to last column in that listing of all departments, we take it against the original budget as you adopted, say, July 1. The next column over is the revised column, and that's when you have grant funds come in, or if a department asks for contingency, or whether federal money, state dollars come in throughout the year. So when we look at the percentage increase, we compare it against where we started at the beginning of the year, not where we can, not how they amended it through the year. So in his case, there was just a slight increase, was about $80,000, less than a percent, which again was a joy to work with because most of the other departments were not those numbers, and it was very easy to accommodate their requests. But just wanted to clarify, is the original budget compared to revised budget when you look at numbers and percentages?
I think that's still pretty close to zero...
It is.
...in budget terms.
Thank you.
But thank you for the update on that. I don't have any questions. We appreciate all your hard work and what you do for the citizens of this county. I know it's not easy work. It's definitely thankless, I'm sure. Probably feel that way standing here many times. But we appreciate your presentation, and thank you for coming today.
Thanks, sir.
All right, we're scheduled for a break on the agenda. Does anyone need a break, or do y'all want to just keep going? Yeah, let's keep going.
The quicker the better.
Ms. Elliott?
I am vertically challenged. So I can't see this screen to operate it. The angle's wrong.
You need a step stool.
I have a step stool with me, and I even have my tall shoes today, but we're going to see if I can pull this off or not. I was going to, my clicker person is downstairs because she wasn't expecting to move this fast. Okay, let's talk about the social services budget.
Do you want us to click for you?
I'm going to see if I can't do it. We'll see where we are.
If you're only asking for $88,000 more too, then we can probably just skip the presentation.
Well, you know, actually, with the manager's recommendation, I think we're flat. We, however, had a slightly greater desire than the manager did, so...
I understand.
It wasn't huge, but it was a slightly greater desire.
Which one do you think we're going to listen to?
The manager's, but you know, you do need to hear thoughts on the subject. And I certainly appreciate the manager's recommendations because he did do a wonderful thing for us in trying to help us with what we needed, but I do have to, you know, kind of share. I did leave in front of all y'all's places some information about Foster Care Month and a pen to recognize that this is National Foster Care Month. We are, Ms. Perkins-Williams has got her zone, I see. We are going to have a walk in honor of Foster Care Month, and so that information is there in case any of you wish to join us on that. And the only change I need to make in what was printed is that we're going to be leaving from the Ag Center instead of the Human Services Building on the 26th because of something else that's going on. So we certainly hope some of you all would like to join us to celebrate what's happening in foster care. Okay. Had board members that were coming today too, but okay. Our board chairman does send her regrets. She did plan to be here, but her son is graduating at ECU today, so that took priority, obviously. This is the request. Let me see if I can make this thing work. I want to thank you, of course, for your past support for this department. I am here to review the key budget changes and advocate for some positions. Budget before you represents mandated programs and services with the exception of the General Assistance Line item. We are not the welfare department that I started in any longer. When I started, everything was about a check, giving people a check, and we don't do that much. And we don't do that much anymore. We have the Work First Program that is about to celebrate its 20th anniversary. We only have 386 cases now in this county that we give a regular, ongoing, monthly check to. And two-thirds of those are situations where it's a child only. It's grandparents raising grandchildren. These kids would be in foster care, for example, if we did not support them through the Work First Program. So, we are supporting very few adults with a regular monthly check on what used to be called the old welfare program. And those folks now have a time limit for how long they can receive those benefits. So, I did want to make sure that folks understand we've changed a lot. We are a very different organization. According to a report that, in the News & Observer, on April the 19th, there was a recent study that they highlighted for us. And talks about the fact that this study, that three-fourths of the folks helped by programs geared for the poor today are members of a family headed by a working adult. Forty-eight percent of the home health workers in this country receive some help from Departments of Social Services. Oh, my clicker person's fine. Forty-six percent of the childcare workers, 52% of fast food workers, 25% of part-time college faculty, and that's how lots of the colleges are going now, receive help nationally from public assistance programs. That would be food stamps, Medicaid, childcare, those kinds of things. Some of your own county employees, some of our county employees qualify for some of these services and receive some of these services. I don't know that our statistics are exactly like this, but we do know a significant number of the folks that we serve today are working poor. And that's the new paradigm. We no longer have folks that are sitting home doing nothing. There's still a few, but we no longer have that kind of situation. This same report did a study of a mother, or profiled a mother in Durham, who works in the home health industry. She has two teenage kids. She makes $1,400, brings home $1,400 a month for her home health work. And she receives $300 in food stamps, and her children get Medicaid. So, that just gives you a sense of kind of what the services look like today. The other thing I want to say is that on our Medicaid program, a third of our Medicaid program recipients account for two-thirds of the cost. That would be your aged, blind, and disabled population. And I can tell you that long-term care is a big driver of those costs. Folks, I don't care how much you save when you're spending 70, $80,000 a year on long-term care, when you get to that point, you use up your savings pretty fast. Our caseloads continue to grow. We received a state report yesterday that showed that Pitt County Medicaid recipients have increased by 44.5% since 2008. Our food stamp caseloads have grown by 68.5% since 2008. Child protection has seen a 39% increase in five years. APS, a 53% increase in five years. Our guardianship caseload is going through the roof. And mental health is driving a lot of that because the bulk of the cases that we're getting now are young adults with significant mental health issues. Our child placement caseload has grown by 34%. That's our foster care caseload in the last three years. In daycare, right now, we are serving 1,600 approximately families in child daycare, but we still have a waitlist for 1,200. And if you don't have daycare, you can't work for many folks. It's a significant cost. So, I say all those kinds of things to kind of give you a sense of what's going on in Pitt County. Pitt County Social Services is about stronger and healthier families and individuals. We are very much about gainful employment and independence. We are one of the few counties in the state that have continued to require our food stamp recipients to look for work during the economic downturn. Most of the counties did not do that. I think there are seven right now that are doing that, and we are one of those seven. So, we very much are about keeping folks employed whenever we can. We are also about sustained well-being for our youth. The proposed budget would give us the resources to better serve the citizens through technology and staff development. I try to remind staff, whenever I get the opportunity, that because of the work that they do, folks have access to food, to medical care, to basic resources to keep them safe, and to find those forever homes for our children. For some of the folks we serve, we are a temporary stop along the way. For our older or disabled population, we may be their ongoing support system for their life. We serve families before birth with Medicaid fundings to support healthy outcomes, prenatal care for our babies. And we serve folks after death. If no one claims your body, we are required to pay the freight for that. So, we have you from pre-birth to after death. Let's see. The, this slide shows you what our total proposed budget, and this is the total budget that we have, not what just runs through the county. And these reflect the county manager's recommended figures. You can see that the biggest share are federal and state dollars. Our share is in the county is, it's actually a tad less than 3% with the rounding. The budget represents a significant economic impact for Pitt County. Over 264 million of this money goes to our medical providers. Nearly 49 million goes to our grocery stores, over 7 million to our daycare providers. And we also collect about 14 million in child support payments that goes to the custodial parents in the county. Pulling those dollars out of the medical facilities, the daycares, the grocery stores, would have a significant impact on our economy. So, wanted to just point that out, recognize it is taxpayer dollars, but I do think it is important for folks to know. Would want to share that Vidaic Medical does fund five positions for us so that we can support some of the things that they need with Medicaid eligibility and those kinds of things. As we said, our total budget was 351 million. The county general fund budget is 34 million. And that's the part that runs through the county books. We are requesting, this again is the manager's figures, $9.2 million. You can see that the funding has stayed flat for this past year. Over the last five years, we have had a 4.5% budget increase over that period of time. To add back, the positions that have been cut would add about 110,000 additional county dollars to the budget. And that would be salary benefits and the equipment to support them. Okay, the major changes that we're asking for in this budget include a documents management software. This agency is still paper-driven, significantly paper-driven. The General Assistance Line item we're asking for is $25,000. That is the only non-mandated thing that we do. But that's where things like burial expenses and other types of emergency services would come, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Our foster care line has continued to grow, and we'll talk about that too. And then I had requested six positions, a human services planner evaluator. I heard y'all talking a lot about getting grants, and somebody's got to work those grants and get the data together for those grants, and make those grant requests, and do all those reports. And right now, that would be me, pretty much, and time is of the essence. We asked for two adult services social workers, one for our Adult Protective Services area and one for our guardianship caseload, two transportation aides or in-home service aides. The manager did recommend one of those two positions, and a program integrity staff person. We are beginning to prosecute. We are partnering with the Sheriff's Department to go after folks who are abusing our programs. So, this budget is about improving efficiency in the department, providing oversight, improving access and service delivery, reducing compensatory time because we have a significant amount of that, protecting our most vulnerable citizens, and reducing our liability. So, the first thing we want to talk about is the documents management software. This was developed specifically for social services, and it will result in improved case tracking, reduced use of basic office supplies, give staff in the field real-time access to records, reduced manual processes, the ability to update records, ability to complete and sign documents, ability to conference with their supervisor while in the field, and a whole lot of other things that I know are already in your budget package. So, I'm not going to spend time talking about all those things. We did a time study about four months ago, had some folks do that. I mean, I'm sorry, it was a four-month time study. It was done several years ago. And it said things that we knew. It was a, we are a paper-driven agency. You walk paper around this place a lot. That time, we're not productive because we spend so much time waiting, sitting in court, sitting at the doctor's office, doing things like that. When staff, if they had access to systems while they were out, could actually be doing something during that time. It gives me the opportunity, I had a call yesterday from a medical provider. I have to authorize procedures for children and adults that we have responsibility for. And a provider called and said they needed to do an endoscopy for one of our children. And they wanted information about that child when they made the phone call. And I could have said, if we had this system and pulled it up at my desk, but I don't have access to that kind of information. So, we had to do a back-and-forth kind of thing before we could finally get that done. There are 37 counties currently using this system in North Carolina, and it is a national system. Beaufort County has been using this system for some time and received a NACO award back in 2013 for this system. This system has also received a National Better Government Competition Award in 2014. This would be used by 71 social workers and their supervisors. And then some of the admin staff, like myself, would have access to this system. We believe it will save us significant amounts of time, make us much more productive, and reduce liability because things get lost when you're shuffling paper. They really do. Alamance County recently went into this back in October, I think it was. And they were sharing some information the other day that indicates that their assessments have now been reduced by one to five days in time just by using this kind of process and a system. They're being able to do much more documentation on the first day that they see someone, and that there are cost savings with fewer resources required by the social workers. That's everything from paper to less travel monies, just, you know, comp time, all those kinds of things. So, they are seeing fairly quick results from this. Moving to our general assistance budget, we are asking, this was in the budget years ago, I understand, and over the years has been reduced. We're asking to reinstate general assistance by $25,000. This would be a reserve for critical emergency needs. This would be priority given to our aged and disabled individuals. And I say that because we have federal resources for some crisis programs for our families and children. We have nothing for our aged and disabled population. This would be things, assistance with housing, utilities, medications, things that come up. It would be very short-term types of assistance. Our Adult Protective Services cases frequently need just a little bit of something. And we sometimes aren't able to provide any results in them going into placement. We also spent all of our money for our unclaimed bodies in 10 months this year. So, this also increases a little bit of that funding. Not a whole lot, but a little bit. We talked about the fact that our foster care caseloads and our dollars are going up here. This is being driven by a variety of things. You can see from this chart that in fiscal year 13, we had less than $1 million budget for foster care. You can see that we're projecting for fiscal year 15, 16, 1.8, almost 1.9 million dollars. So, a significant amount of growth. You can also see that during the calendar years, you can see that in the 2012 calendar year, we had 135 children go through the foster care system in this county. We had 206 go through the foster care system in 2014. So, those numbers are increasing significantly. This is a $341,000 increase, and it's 23% increase if you want to look at the percentage piece. We've had, as we said, a 34% increase in our caseload. The children that are coming into care now are older, and they have many, many more problems. We, 45% of the children in care today are 13 years of age or older. This typically means we have to place them in a group home, and group homes are much more costly than family foster homes. Most family foster homes do not want to deal with teenagers coming out of the homes and the situations that teenagers are coming out of. We also are seeing a significant number of our children that are coming in requiring specialized care. They have the mental health issues that some of our adults are having too. We've had to commit several children this year into mental health facilities. We work very closely with ECBH to approve the level of care and to maximize Medicaid dollars. Sometimes, however, it takes a while to get those kinds of dollars in place, and the county winds up paying all county money until such time as ECBH can approve those dollars. And I can give you an example of a child. I would, I hope that this is our worst-case scenario, but we have others that are similar. This child was placed in mid-December in a level of care that was anticipated to be appropriate based on what we were dealing with with ECBH. We have paid thus far $35,000 on this child out of all county money because they still have not been appropriately leveled by ECBH. And it has to do with the utilization review folks, those kinds of things. So, it takes some months to get this done. We had one child that sat two months in detention center because ECBH could not get them leveled appropriately so they could be placed. So, it takes time. And we have to have a bed for these children as quickly as possible when they come into our care. So, we don't have the options sometimes that we would like. We have had three children this year to disrupt significantly and have to go into the hospital, the emergency room, until such time as we could find a bed for them. We have had to send staff to go sit with these children 24 hours a day until such a placement can be found. We do try to contract with home health providers to do that where they can, but sometimes it is our staff going and sitting with these children. And we have to rotate that. And these children are not always sitting in Pitt County. Sometimes they're placed in other parts of the state. So, it contributes to our compensatory time problems. It contributes to travel dollars, a variety of things. So, just to share that it's not the infant coming into care anymore, the three-year-old. We're getting children with significant, significant problems. And we have to join at the hip with ECBH to, or Trillium as they're about to become, to get these things done and get them done as quickly as we can. But these things do sometimes happen. The staff additions that we are proposing. I believe very strongly that Pitt County Social Services is at the point that they need a human service planner evaluator. We need people who can analyze data, evaluate ways to better serve Pitt County. Look at how we're doing business. We've had significant changes in our agency, and I'm afraid that it's a daily struggle to remind folks, things have changed and you need to do business differently. So, somebody needs to help us with that. We need to be able to do strategic planning. We need to become more outcome-focused. We need to pursue those grants that the Health Department's getting. Are we positioned efficiently and effectively to serve our citizens? And our data needs to drive our decision-making. So, this seemed to be a position, and many counties have this position in DSS. Some are using it also to help with some of the quality control issues that need to be done. We requested this position in this year's budget, and those are some of the reasons why we did request that position. This position would be funded 50% federal. Moving right along, our next position that we requested that did not make it into the budget. As I said, we had two social workers in our Services Division, one to do Adult Protective Services and the other for Guardianship. We've had no staff growth since 2000 in our Adult Protective Services area, but we've had a 53% caseload growth. The recommended standard for this caseload is 25. We had a recent review by the state, and we are not meeting state timeframes for completing investigations. We are in there, we're doing what needs to be done, but we're not timely in completing those investigations. The aging population is increasing, but also the disabled population is increasing. 50% of the cases in 2014 required court intervention, which means that there were pretty serious kinds of cases. In fact, a couple were criminally charged this year. We're talking about folks that are being exploited financially, abused, and neglected. And we hate to think that happens with our folks, but it does happen. The Guardianship, and this would be a 50/50 position. The Guardianship situation with our social workers, currently we have two full-time equivalent folks doing this. It's scattered among several people. We've had a 91% caseload growth. Again, it's not the elderly lady with dementia now. It is significant mental health-related issues. The caseload standard is 25 to 30, and we had 88 Guardianships last year that we carried at any one point in time. So, we are significantly understaffed in that area. There's a significant liability if we don't do what we need to do. I'm being asked to make things like DNR decisions, property decisions, medical decisions- I'm being asked to make things like DNR decisions, property decisions, medical decisions, all kinds of things for these folks, placement decisions. Some of our folks don't qualify for Medicaid, because they have some limited resources, but they don't have enough to do what needs to be done, and this is one of the new areas that is probably going to start smacking us in the face shortly. This is a very volatile population, this younger group, and if we can't find a family to take on some of the younger ones, they could be with us for fifty or sixty years in our caseload, so we just need to be thinking and cognizant of that. This position also has the fifty percent funding. The next position that we asked for is in our social work support area, human resources, transportation aid. The pay grade here, it's a paraprofessional position, and again, would be fifty-fifty. We spend a significant amount of time running people up and down the highway. We take our foster children lots of places, we have to take our guardians lots of places. These are folks who cannot go by themselves to sit in a doctor's office. We have to take our guardian clients to grocery shop to pay bills, just a variety of things. That is, for social work staff to be running up and down the highway, that's not productive use of their time. They need to be working on those critical things that are going to help the families move forward, but these are activities that have to get done. We believe very strongly that we need to ask for these kinds of positions and put these kinds of positions in place to reduce our overtime that we are having. This county did have some of these kinds of positions in the past, but again, as budget cuts phased out, these positions went away as people retired. We would anticipate a staggered work schedule. The manager did support one of these positions for us. And the final position request was in the Income Maintenance Division for a fraud investigator. Right now, we've had, as we said before, a significant increase in our public assistance caseload in the past year even. We have three hundred potential claims pending investigation today. We collected a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in claims last year, and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars of that was returned to the county to help support these positions, in addition to the fifty-fifty federal funding, so they pretty much paid their own way. What I will say is that our overdue claims rate right now, because we are so understaffed, is eighty-one point three percent. We should be at no higher than ten percent, so we are not meeting the requirements at this point in time. We did have as many as four folks in this division at one point, as I said, we have two people now. These folks also do all the hearings for the department, when people need a hearing, when they disagree with the decision that was made. The manager did recommend this position be in the budget. So, I will answer any questions, that's kind of where we are. Again, the manager's budget is flat, ours would add about a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand if you added all those positions back in.
That was mighty low.
What was mighty low?
The last comment you made.
The fact that the manager's budget remains flat, and it would take about a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and ten thousand to add all of those positions back in.
We thank you for your presentation, and it's mind-boggling to me how much money actually does go through there, creeping toward a half a billion dollars in one county out of a hundred and one state out of fifty. And I know you've got a lot of responsibilities, and I like your forward-thinking when it comes to the data-driven approach, and I know you're probably expecting me to say I hate kids and Disney World, but I...
I've gotten past that.
I do appreciate your approach that you're taking in trying to modernize, I think that's a good thing. The document management system, I'll just take a moment, just ask one question. That seems like something that might could pay for itself at some point in, say, man-hours, and just in the efficiencies that it could bring, where the caseload on paper may be tougher to manage than it would be electronically. I have a caseload myself that, and it's easier when I can just pull it up on the screen, add to it, save and go, versus having to push around paperwork to supervisors or subordinates or peers. And so it just seems like that might be something that we should consider, if not this year, at least in the near future, just for those, because as you said, sitting in court, you can still wirelessly complete your work and stay on task, and it also gives you a better metric to gauge what people are doing.
Exactly, and you can find the cases.
Right, and you can tell when they were modified and when they were submitted and everything, so it leaves a lot, it's a lot better than a stack on a desk. So I think that is something that is a valid need. Mr. Manager, do you have?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I just want to point out, on that system, it's about a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar software acquisition cost, of which part of it is federally reimbursed, but part of the rationale and pain for that is, we are now pulling down seventy-five percent reimbursement on a lot of the Medicaid positions compared to fifty percent in the past, so we're using that. We're actually financing this over a three-year period to hold the costs flat, per se, but do want you to be where we would be bringing back to you in the new year, the acquisition cost of this, as the feds participate in purchasing this.
Good, so it seems like we're on the right track, and then it just may take a little long, but, so since I started in the middle, we'll work our way out, Ms. Ward.
Thank you for your presentation, and I don't have many questions, Ma, but I do have an interest, I know that over the past few years, and this may be directed to you all, how many, well, the past year and a half, how many additional people have we placed in social services after the budget was set?
We did thirty-one in the new budget last year, and there's been nothing added since.
Yeah, no positions, I think, have been added in the course of the fiscal year, but as Ms. Elliott said, last year there were thirty, thirty-one positions.
Thirty-one positions. Three in child welfare and twenty-eight in public assistance.
Right, and I just kind of wanted the public to kind of hear that, like, we have not been ignoring, because we understand that the personnel was down, and that these were not temporary positions, and they are recurring positions, and their salaries are still being paid out of this budget, and many of those, weren't some of those put in after the budget year nun?
No, we had a staggered hiring, but they were all approved as part of the budget process.
Okay. The other thing was the Administrative Division, the Human Services Planner-Evaluator. I would imagine that, I mean, I think that's very important, but I would imagine, is there any way that there's somebody we already have on staff that we could train in that area? I mean, I don't know how many, you have a list of people who would be available to come in and do this in our house, or should we be looking at somebody you already have on staff?
I don't know that we have anybody on staff that could be repurposed, there certainly is something to be looked at, their other job would certainly have to get done some other way.
Sure, I understand that, because...
But certainly, if this position were authorized, we would look at internal folks as well as external. The problem that most of us have is, we're not statisticians, we're social workers. I mean, we didn't grow up with that kind of mindset.
I understand that, I did not either, but I'm trying to stay in this century, and my thought is that, you know, if we had somebody that we could work with over, like, this year or six months or whatever, and then deal with the consequences of that position, you know, not being whatever position they were holding, because I believe in, I mean, I think this is very important, but I also think that maybe we could have somebody that we could be working on to get them prepared, and then next year we could see about filling that hole for them.
And that's certainly something to look at. The other thing we've talked about looking at is, can we bring in any resources from the college, but those would be little one-time kinds of shots that wouldn't be the ongoing understanding of the agency and that kind of thing.
Right, but it could be a start until you could get somebody trained.
We have talked about that too.
Thank you very much.
Mr. McGlough.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman, I wanted to ask you about the document management software system. What type of system are you using now? And I remember, last year, I think there was a system that came to the county commissioners, and everybody was pushing this system, it seemed like it had some problems.
Are we talking about NC FAST? I try not to talk about that system if I possibly can.
I think it is, NC FAST. Now, how would that compare to, this new system compare to that? Because I...
NC FAST is phasing in to the county, it is phasing in statewide. The NC FAST system right now is about eligibility for services, and it is a case management system. The child welfare and adult services arena that we're talking about for this, although a lot of our agencies that have bought this software have bought it agency-wide, but we are only talking about the services arena. That area will not even have access to a case management system, they're just now beginning to design it at the state level, they're saying three or more years before that will be in place, and this has already matched up with that, and they can complement each other, because this is documents-focused. So, it's a whole different area of the agency, but last year, yeah, the state was generous to work on things like food stamps and Medicaid, daycare, and low-income energy will be the next two programs to move into NC FAST, and we are still working hard to make this system work in the state, like it should.
So NC FAST would not go away?
NC FAST would not go away.
This new system would just, that you're proposing for us to look into, would just complement?
It would complement, it would be the front-end portion of NC FAST, to NC FAST. But this is documents management, it helps us have, you know, it auto-fills when you go out to start a form, it will auto-fill, it will do a lot of those kinds of things, it's web-based, I mean, it's documents, it's about documents, not about eligibility and those kinds of things.
And also, you mentioned, that's forty-eight percent of Pitt County's citizen that receive social service assistance.
Well, I think, you're talking back to that study that was done, what I was talking about was nationally, when you look at the individuals nationally and how they're playing out, but if you look at our Medicaid program, for example, close to twenty percent of Pitt County receives Medicaid.
And what percentage of the twenty percent are working family?
Well, with the families and children, they're about two-thirds of our Medicaid caseload, again, the one-third that I talked about that drives the dollars are the aged and disabled, so you won't see as much working with that group, but when you're talking about the family and children, oh, I would say sixty, seventy percent of them are working full-time.
So there's a threshold amount that...
Their income levels, uh-huh, uh-huh, yeah, that, so, and you can receive Medicaid, I believe, they keep changing the numbers on me, but as a family, you can have a hundred and thirty-three percent of poverty, up to two hundred percent of poverty, depending on the age of the child and that kind of thing, there are different levels. So when you get to two hundred percent of the poverty level, a lot of folks qualify for their children. Adults don't qualify necessarily, but the children do, because healthy children are important.
Well, I think that's interesting to note, because, you know, some would not imagine the condition, the situation that most families are in, especially in today's economy, so thank you very much.
Mr. Garris.
Yes, most of the questions I had have already been answered, it primarily centered around the documents management system. And Scott, did I hear you say that you're going to be coming back to us with the implementation of that?
Right, in order to execute the contract, that will require board approval, it's beyond my authority.
Okay, and that, you said that nine hundred, would cost nine hundred thousand dollars, and seventy-five percent of that would be federal-funded?
Forty percent is eligible for direct reimbursement. I think what Mr. Elliott was talking about was that with the revenues that we are now generating through the eligibility for Medicaid, because we're now getting seventy-five percent instead of fifty percent, which is how they've traditionally been budgeted, those additional revenues would help offset, I believe is what he's talking about, so it's money that's already in the county, basically.
Okay, so it would appear to me, then, if we had seventy-five percent offset, and then the program was going to merit efficiency improvements, that we could almost do that without a whole lot of out-of-pocket cost, hopefully.
We're hoping, once the software's in place, that it will, it definitely will make the social workers more efficient, whether we need to, or can take advantage of opportunity to have less social workers, they're telling me because they're growing caseloads, that may not be the case. But the biggest point on this is, to stave off liability of not handling the cases correctly is, I'm not saying we're not handling them correctly right now, but the technology we have is not letting us be as efficient as we should be today, and we have a critical need to be more efficient in both child protective services and adult protective services to handle these clients.
What the counties that have done this already have seen, and we've had, like I say, several that have been in there for three or four years now, they're seeing that staff can handle more, in that they're not having as much overtime, so they can get more done during the day. I mean, our overtime costs were seventy-eight thousand dollars in child welfare this year that we paid out so far, and so the overtime issue would be going, they're seeing significant savings in things like paper and copying and postage, I mean, when you have to send a record that's about yay big to a variety of attorneys in town, that can be pretty costly, not to mention trying to plow through it and see what's there. So, I mean, there are lots of efficiencies that will ultimately save dollars, I think Beaufort County has said that they have remained pretty flat in their Services Division in cost for several years now, since they implemented this.
So there would be some efficiency improvements for that twenty-five percent that the county is responsible for?
Well, again, I think the funding scenario she's paying is probably sixty percent federal, forty percent federal. We're just saying that on the positions within the department, we are now able to pull down seventy-five percent rather than fifty percent, so the revenue from that is being applied on this project, there's a sixty, forty split, if that makes sense.
Very good, thank you. Doing a great job, we appreciate it. Three hundred and fifty-one million dollar budget, as has already been stated, is just mind-boggling for one county out of this state, and there are fifty states, it's amazing. But anyway, thank you.
Mr. Owens.
Of the three hundred and fifty million dollars, about how many employees do you have?
We have, I have that figure right here, it's two hundred and sixty-seven budgeted positions.
Of your budget, how much do you budget for overtime?
Basically, we don't budget for overtime, we use lap salary money. Basically, we do not budget for overtime as such, we use lap salary money to pay the overtime. We have some turnover and some delay in recruiting, and so there is some money from that standpoint. We don't have a line item that says overtime.
Mr. Owens, if I can further elaborate on that, they also can receive between fifty, sixty, and seventy-five percent reimbursement, even on every dollar of overtime they pay. We've had more overtime this year than the past, as you're aware, the backlogs we've had with NCPTS implementation, as well as the backlog in cases that had in CPS, APS, Adult and Child Protective Services, this year's kind of been an anomaly. Once we have the agency in full compliance with NC FAST, and we get the software into place, we don't anticipate...
I don't anticipate the overtime being nearly as significant anymore, but again, right now, we're sitting with something like nine positions vacant in our child welfare area. You've still got the same amount of work, because I can't say, I can't do this investigation today because I don't have people, you know.
And these aren't necessarily frozen positions, they're positions they're recruiting for, but it just takes time.
Right, right.
One question to that is, of those, it's a management issue, then, isn't it?
And what way do you mean a management issue?
When you say you've got nine positions to do twenty people's work, it's a management position problem, isn't it?
Well, it's a problem that when people leave the agency with retirements and things like that, you have got to figure out a way to continue to do the work.
That's what I meant, thank you, Ma.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coulson.
Well, I'm going to echo it, it is shocking, three hundred and fifty-one million, I guess that's better than three hundred and sixty-four million last year. But, just so, if anybody's out there listening, that comes to just shy of two... But just so if anybody's out there listening, that comes to just shy of $2,000 for every man, woman, and child in the county. Think of the cost. And every man, woman, and child doesn't pay taxes. That means that there's a select few that pay this. And while the money may come from the federal and may come from the state, it's their money. It's your money. If a family has three children, have a husband and a wife and three kids, that means that that family is being denied the ability, if you could just spread this out evenly, of $10,000. I'd like to ask people out there, what would they do if all of a sudden their budget was impacted by an additional $10,000? Would you buy new shoes for your kids? Would you drive a better car? Could you get your car repaired that needs it? It's shocking. And quite frankly, I believe that it is society's problem because we have allowed it to become the norm. We are rewarding bad decisions, immoral behavior, families that are created by multiple partners. They get more money the more children they have. Yes, they do.
Not anymore.
Ma'am, come on now. Men that desert their families, and we allow it as society. And, yeah, it's nice to see where the sheriff goes and tries to get some of the deadbeat dads, but he's only hitting the top of the, the very top of the problem. The biggest portion never, they just are not responsible. We, society, is allowing this. It's not getting better, and my opinion's getting worse. And there's a lot of people, and I'm one of them, that's quite bitter about the fact that we're paying more and more and more and more in taxes. The responsible citizens of this country are being asked to take significant less by giving more, under threat of taking away their homes that they have worked for, under threat of putting them in jail because they don't want to pay their taxes. If we as a society, not just Pitt County, but if we as a society don't do something about this, we are going to fail just like Rome. Rome failed because the people found that they could vote largest from the treasury and put nothing in it themselves. And that's where we are now. I would encourage you to do this document management system. But in its place, you're going to have to have a cultural change within your own business.
Exactly.
By a cultural change, that's what I'm saying is, is it's, you made the comment, Mr. Manager, that it'll definitely make for more efficiency. It will not unless a cultural change takes place, which is that it is expected that these people do this. In the 1980s, when we traveled, I was working for Black and Decker, and we were sitting in an airport, and we didn't have computers then. But we sat there and we did work, and that work was, it was expected of us. And if we didn't do it, it was measured through productivity. And the managers, whoever manages these people, they've got to recognize what the ability of this system is and what these people could do as opposed to what they actually do. And then it needs to be looked at from the standpoint of, do they get a merit pay raise or not? Do they even get a COLA adjustment? Do they take a decrease in pay? You know, the other day, I was interested that Mark said it was completely foreign to him about overtime. In the civilian world, if you work as a salary person, you don't get overtime. If your job takes you 60 hours to do it, by golly, you're expected to get it done. If you can find a way to become more efficient and you do it in 30 hours, guess what we managers do? We usually ask you to do a little bit more because we have to. We're in a competitive environment. We just can't go out and tax the people. The company I work for, we have to go earn business. We can't just come to the county and say, or the government, say, hey, you know, we want to have more, so please give us something. We can't go to our customers and demand more money. Not if a competing organization ends up being able to lower the price through their own productivity or whatever. What I don't see in government is truly a creative environment that tries to lessen the problem. Look at us. Look at the entire country. We are digging a hole. We talk about Medicare, and why don't we expand it? You know, the state of North Carolina has been criticized, along with, I think, 17 other states, for not doing that. And guess what? We're actually saving the federal government money. Not only North Carolina money, but federal government money because it's all borrowed money. It's all deficit that our kids are being burdened with. And of this $351 million, we talk about, oh, that's federal money. They pay 50% of it. 50% on a lot of this? In some cases, it's more than 50%. It's borrowed money. And we say, oh, well, we need to have that come into Pitt County. And every county across this state and every county within this country is out there asking Uncle Sam, send some more to me, send some more to me. It's like throwing trinkets onto the beach and then throwing a net over people and capturing them fiscally. And I know I sound like I'm lecturing, but I'm quite angry about this. $351 million in little old Pitt County. And meanwhile, there are many people in this county, you talk about some of them, that don't even, that you never even see, that are on fixed incomes with Social Security and meager savings, and we're eating away at it, and eating away at it every year. Higher costs. I mentioned it yesterday, when you go back to Keynesian economics, there are some people that believe that a certain amount of inflation is needed. I don't. Our country in dollar stood flat, level, and strong for 150 years, till the 1930s. And I guess you could actually say it ended with Wilber Wilson. He was the first socialist president that we had. But any case, so if you don't make it a cultural change, you will have wasted the money on that program. If you don't expect it, if it's not measured, if the people don't do it, and if the managers that have them or supervisors that, if they don't pay attention to that. But I'm going to guarantee you something. A year from now, if you do that, I'm going to be asking questions about it.
And I do not disagree with you at all that it's got to be a cultural change. We're seeing some of that with NC FAST. We still want to try and do business the way, and we're having to push that change. So I know you're right about that.
Sometimes you've got to get their attention.
Right, you've got to, you've got to work on that. I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulson. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott, for such a detailed report. As a new member of the board, I haven't had the privilege of hearing the social service presentation on budget prior to today. But I served on the social service board for a number of years. And this group has been very patient with us as individuals because we all get on, Charles Farley says, a soapbox sometime. And I suppose we do. And that's because I think we have passion within what we do as a representative of the area. And that being said, I was surprised when I was appointed to the Board of Social Services and discovered that all of their records was paper. And we were in the 20s and late years. I could not believe it. That was something hard for me to do. So I started going to all of the meetings that I was asked to come to, beyond Pitt County, in the region, and at the state, and at the conventions. I'm not a social worker, but I educated myself and compared to the, my exposure with information and research. I found that Pitt County was so far behind other counties as it relates to innovation and technology. And this system, what is an integrated system that can help the staff become a bit more efficient at what they do. After learning all of that beyond Pitt County, I came back. And one day in session, I offered to volunteer to do some simple inputting of the record. My experience at East Carolina University afforded me with the basics for data transfer from paper into technology. And when I offered to get that exposure from one discipline to another, I was never invited to just volunteer for social services. I know you weren't there. But I want to say this. The background of transferring paper into electronic data would have been a benefit to enlighten me as to what you had to go through to get that paper into the computer. And I kept asking, is the computer system capable of handling the data that we have? Pitt County is not a stagnant county. It's growing by leaps and bounds. Took me five lights to get across the Tar River to Fifth Street this morning. But I want to say, until we start being creative about what we do in a various position and know that technology is here, whether we like it or not, and it's not going to go anyplace. So in this budget, I do hope that we do look at this system that is needed. In this budget, I do hope that we get someone who can write grants. And I'm sorry that my offer to input data for the system was not received. And I don't like forcing my free work on somebody who getting paid. But I want you to know, it would have given me an enlightenment to know what's there and to know what the employees was faced with because I knew that they were stressed. I knew that you were making demands about NC FAST. And having talked with other board members throughout the county, I knew that it was a system created of bugs, worms, and something else they told me in other counties. But they found a way to get through it, and I asked the State Department, are the bugs real? And their report to us on the regional board was yes. They are real, but we're finding workarounds and work dues. Now, as a board member, I wasn't allowed to get into that call-in and all this. Coming to county commissioner has opened up some of that gate. I don't know whether I'm happy about it or not. But still, I want you to know that I'm serious, Mr. Coulson, because I listen to you, about the government and what it does. When we transferred from paper to electronic, it was dumped on me. I took my work home because I was expected to do it, and I got it done. And beyond the set time that it was done because I wanted my work to be beneficial to the tax dollars that you didn't know I was using, then get reward. But I wanted to be efficient because whatever you do, I was brought on, do the best you can and make it stand for something. That's the principle for which I was taught up. The old ways that you and Mark talked to me back behind the door about, and making your work count. I did that and didn't complain because I never got a raise. Now, I want you to know that I don't fully understand all of the things of social work, but I know it is disgusting to have a county like Pitt County to be paper in this day and time of technology. And I went to systems, other systems, where you have a computer sitting in front of you, and some of them had two and three screens where they could pull in a case. And when the social worker went out, they had access to the full record. We've got to start doing something much better than we do. And yes, we do spend a lot of money. Yes, there are taxes, but we've got to be better stewards of the question we ask when we on this board and be responsible people. We can find grants, yes, grant money, it's got some taxes too, you know. But if we can get it in this county, we can handle the influx of the population. And we won't have us standing there looking like she looks now, begging to make the staff be efficient and do what it needs to serve the people. Now, when I got on the board, there were a lot of frozen positions. And I said, my goodness, there's a lot of frozen positions. But the staff was expected to still do the work. And they did, and they said they were not stressed nor moral. Ain't no way in the world I had some common sense. But I want us, please, to be responsible about the system, this grant-writing position, and the things that she said. And my question to you was, Mr. Manager, was this in the budget? This page six in our vote in the presentation?
On page six, I'm recommending one of the two transportation aids. And I also recommended the fiscal integrity position to look at fraud. But the other positions, no, I did not recommend.
Yeah, because some folks do duck paying their child support.
So two of the six positions were recommended. The other four were not due to funding constraints.
I like to see the professional staff do professional work and not have to drive a child and sit and watch them talk and say, well, what you do today? Let the professional staff do professional work. And I won't say how they hammered to drive and to meet with grandma or somebody. But what I'm saying is, let technical people who don't have the degree and got themselves to do that kind of stuff. They need jobs too, and there are a lot of people who can do it in this county. I'm sorry, yep, I'm on, he's delivered a sermon, and I am too. And y'all are so patient with us, but...
I'm going to stop going to that side.
I want the community to know that we are serious about what we do. And thank you for agreeing about the system. And until we get it off of paper, we're going to always be inefficient. Because you've got to go find that piece of paper stored in that room over there to take it. Because Jan works in a two-building setting. And the complaints I got is said that Pitt County has two social service departments. One over here at 1717, and one across the street at the government circle. And they don't operate as efficient to the community. And I didn't say that. You all don't operate, I said to the community, as good as Doc Morrow over there. Because, you know, it just doesn't happen like that. But I don't know what you're going to do. There ain't no money, but you do the best you can. And I wasn't afforded the privilege to do that inputting. And right now, having been elected committee, I don't even have time on this board here. I don't even have time to do the rest of it because I have to educate myself on departments that I don't know about. So thank y'all for your patience, and I know you've got a long mountain to climb, but hey, I did it anyway, didn't I? Thank you so much for all you do and to the community. Just be patient when you go to social services.
We try hard.
Be patient.
I want to thank the manager for looking into that as well and being prepared for after the first of the year. Doing that, working with our department head. Mr. Hammond, do you have any questions on Ms. Elliott?
No, I don't.
All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank y'all. I would like to recognize Coral Richards. She's here. She's one of our board members. And I wanted to recognize that she did come today to support this budget. Thank y'all very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just make a follow-up comment about the technology?
Yes.
And Ms. Elliott, within DSS, the agency is quickly becoming, obviously with the implementation of NC FAST, all the food stamp records, all the Medicaid records, all that is quickly is an electronic record computer system. With this recommendation for inclusion of this budget for the Northwood software, for adult protective services and child protective services, you're talking about an agency that is going to be up to date on technology. And all the records will be in the system and be worked that way.
Well, I appreciate that. I haven't received any calls in quite some time about services not being provided timely because of the backlog that used to be there.
It's getting a whole lot better. Our food stamp program is timely every day. I mean, there might be one slip, but they're timely every day. Our Medicaid applications are getting processed timely. Our Medicaid applications are getting processed timely. We have a very small number now that are overdue, still higher than you want, but a smaller, much, I mean, you used to have hundreds and hundreds, it's a much smaller number. And our reviews have been worked down substantially. We've done over 16,000 reviews in the last eight months, so worked down substantially.
Thank you for your hard work. Next on the agenda, we have the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Mr. Schmidt.
Just wait for a moment while this lures pops up here.
Does it make you, does it, while you, hey.
Oh.
Well, Andrew.
Yes.
While you're waiting, does it make you feel bad that you ran everybody away?
I usually do that. Yeah, my wife says I'm good at that. They did clear out, didn't they? Wow.
Thank you.
You guys can't leave, so I got at least someone to talk to.
Right, yeah. All right, well, thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. I'm Andrew Schmidt. I'm the Executive Director for the Greenville-Pitt County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I just want to start out with just our mission statement, why we exist, is to foster an environment of superior travel and tourism experiences. We want people to come to Greenville and Pitt County and have a positive travel experience, whether it's for a convention, meeting, athletic tournament, family reunion, leisure travel. We want them to have an experience here that they can take home and have such a good experience and memory that they come back and visit again. Obviously, the other component of that is that we're here to create a positive economic impact for the city and county through travel and tourism. We want people to choose Greenville and Pitt County over other destinations, and that's what we do. We compete against other destinations to bring meetings, events, tournaments, reunions, and events to Greenville-Pitt County. Let's see, we do have, excuse me for one second. Okay. We do have several strategic goals that we're going to achieve with our budget for the 2015-2016 year. Our board, back in late February, we met for several hours in the afternoon and we came up with the five strategic goals. And this is what our budget is centered around. Increasing convention sales is the first one. We obviously have a $4.2 million expansion going on at our convention center and an aesthetic outfit as well. So we want to make sure that we do our part to help fill that building. We want to become a more recognized entity in Greenville-Pitt County and really teach people about the value of the economic impact of tourism and what people that come to our community bring when they bring their tourist dollars. Become more involved in local government. We want our staff to invest time and energy into other individuals' missions that are travel and tourism related, and then in turn they'll invest their energies in ours. Grow the number of sports tournaments per year. Sports marketing is the fastest growing market in the travel and tourism industry. Over $700 billion was spent by individuals in the sports market last year in 2014. And then also increase the number of leisure travelers to Greenville-Pitt County. If there's a weakness that we have in any market, it's the leisure market, and we're trying to increase the number of folks that come here just to come and shop, come and eat. Pitt County's got a number of new places that people like to go. The Creamery out in Aiden is one of the new places that a lot of people are drawn to. So we use our inventory like that to try to bring people in for travel and tourism. We do have board members. We're comprised of a board and it's four hotel owner and operators, two hospitality-related positions, four general citizens interested in the hospitality industry, a Chamber of Commerce appointee, and then our city and county liaison. And Commissioner Coulson is our liaison for our CVA board, and we appreciate his input and his attendance at our meetings, and also a city finance officer. So we are governed by a board of directors. And we do have a stringent approval process for our budget. It's been approved twice so far. It's been approved by the Executive Committee of the CVA, and then our full board has looked at this budget and approved it. We're here today in front of the commissioners and will be in front of the city council next Thursday evening. And just as a reminder and more for the people maybe watching at home, we do not receive any revenues from the general funds from Pitt County or from the city of Greenville. We are funded solely on the hotel motel occupancy tax. That tax is collected at 6%. 3% goes to pay the debt service off on the convention center. Out of that 3%, 1% goes to convention center marketing, and we get 2%.
Could you raise your microphone?
Sure, absolutely. Is that better?
That's better.
Sure.
Jan was showing.
So at any rate, our revenues are from occupancy tax only. We're not a membership organization, but we do not receive any supplements. It's just strictly occupancy tax revenue. And I do want to take a moment and just thank Pitt County because Pitt County was one of the first counties to go after online travel companies. Because online travel companies like Orbits and Priceline, Kayak, those, were not paying occupancy tax. And Pitt County did settle with those companies since, I think, February was the first payment that we received from online travel companies. So that is helpful, and we appreciate that. I think there's only three or four counties in the state of North Carolina right now that have accomplished that goal of getting the OTCs to pay their fair share of occupancy tax. So thank you very much for that. We appreciate that. Current budget year highlights, what we've accomplished this year, just a synopsis. We did relocate to the Uptown District. We're now on Cotan Street. That's made a significant difference in the amount of walk-in traffic that we've had, people walking by and coming in and allowing us to talk to them about what Greenville-Pitt County is all about. We just finished our website redevelopment. That'll launch next week. We're excited about that. I think for the first time in a while, we've got some good strategic goals and a roadmap on where we want to go in the next couple of years. We've used some funds this year for technological upgrades, social media upgrades. We have hired an additional staff member on the sales side, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. And I'm proud to announce that we were just recognized by North Carolina Green Travel, which is a hospitality organization. And we're now the first convention and visitors bureau in the state of North Carolina to be recognized by Green Travel as having sustainable business practices for a tourism organization. And that's a big deal because two out of three travelers now, individual travelers, actually are making decisions where they want to go, where they want to visit based on some of those environmental impacts that the organizations they're visiting have. So that's a good thing for us. The budget that's before you today, it's an amended budget. We're on the second year of our budget cycle. And when we did this budget last year, we budgeted with a 2.5% increase in occupancy tax collections. And collections have gone way over that forecast, and we're very excited about that. As travel has come back, ADR, which is average daily rate, is up. So that's important. RevPAR, which is revenue per available room, that's up. ICMC is up. So right now, currently today, we're standing at a 10.5% increase versus 2.5%. So we amended our budget, and we're looking at a 6% ratio to work with. And we think it'll be much higher than that, but to be conservative, we're looking at a 6% ratio for our budget for this year. This is our fiscal year budget for 2015-2016. It's over $1 million. The occupancy tax collections will, at the 6%, provide $866,200 of that, and then fund balance is at $160,640.5. Again, with a 10.5% increase versus the 6% what we're budgeting on, I think that fund balance that we'll use will be a lot less, but we did need to balance it and base it on a conservative approach just in case. So that is our budget. And again, it is all derived from occupancy tax. What are we going to do this year at the CVB with that budget? First of all, it's all about marketing. I'm a marketing person, and in our industry, you've got to be competitive. You've got to have people beating the streets, getting out there and choosing to get in the planners, getting the event organizers' doors, and selling Greenville-Pitt County. And that's what we do. We sell all the assets of Greenville-Pitt County to these event planners, these tournament organizers, these meeting planners. So we'll have an aggressive marketing effort. By hiring an additional salesperson, we've been able to divvy up our markets. When I was the Sales and Marketing Manager before I elevated to the Executive Director job, I had every market. I had the association groups, I had the corporate groups, I had the government groups, I had the what we call SMURF groups, social military education, religious fraternal groups, the tournament groups. And it was very hard for me to get very far in any market because, you know, I had to reach all of them. So with an additional salesperson, we're going to divide those markets up and we can have deeper penetration. And that's going to help us be more competitive against other destinations with other bureaus that have many more salespeople than we do. We can develop new markets. Again, I think I alluded to the fact that we're going to really look at the sports market hard. Sports market is very intriguing, and for a lot of reasons, it's really the only market that has what we call support travelers, which means when I go to a convention or meeting, it's pretty much just me going because my wife and four kids, you know, someone's got to be home with the kids. But on weekends with tournaments, mom, dad usually go, brother, sister goes, maybe grandma, grandpa goes. I know when I coached my daughter's travel team, travel basketball, you know, the kids wanted to bring a friend, so all of a sudden you got 20 people in a car. So you've got a lot of people coming for this tournament to spend money. So that's why it's such an intriguing market for us. And we're also going to try to develop a small meetings market to help our leisure, I'm sorry, limited service properties, which are the properties that don't have a lot of meeting space, but a little bit of meeting space. So we want to develop those two new markets and also the leisure market. So those are three areas that we're going to concentrate on with our new salesperson. We're going to increase our advertising levels, and we're going to be a little bit different. The print advertising is still necessary, but digital advertising is really kind of the wave of the future. You get more bang for your buck off the digital than you do off the print. There's some places that you do need still have a print presence, but we're going to increase our advertising, especially in the digital areas. And then also cooperative marketing opportunities with our hospitality partners to stretch our dollars to make them go further. We also want to enhance our community relationships. Training and education for staff is included in the budget. We haven't had that before, but I think it's important that my staff knows everything that's going on in the industry and is in the top of the knowledge tree as far as what's going on in the industry. So we've joined a few organizations. DMAI, which is Destination Marketing Association International, is one of them that offers a lot of educational opportunities for CVB staff. And it's really very cheap. It's mostly webinars, so you're not leaving your office. It's just more of a time thing. But we want to make sure that our staff is the best it can be in doing what it does. Updating technology is extremely important. We're going away from printing. If you look at our printing line item, we're really cutting that down. We're only going to print two pieces this year. That's our visitor guide and our map. Everything else is going to be electronic. But we've put some money in technology for not only our visitor center, but for the way that we calculate economic impact. We're going to use a software to do that instead of just using old formulas from the Department of Commerce, software that's updated quarterly that will show you not just the economic impact in dollars, but how many jobs it creates, what the taxes are. We're going to put individuals that are on our sales team on the street with surface units, so they'll just have tablets instead of presentation books and other things that they can easily change on the fly. And then a couple of other things for the budget for this year is we're going to increase membership opportunities for our staff. Our business is relationship oriented. We have to make relationships with those meeting and event planners. And so a lot of the opportunities to do that are through membership. So we're going to increase the number of memberships that we have available for our staff. And then I think what's really important that I'm very excited about is training, not for our staff. That's important too, and that's on our budget. But we're going to spend a little money training other people in our industry that work in Greenville-Pitt County. Because the hospitality industry is so different than a lot of industries. If you walk into a hotel, and I know all of you travel, if you walk into a hotel and you have a great check-in experience, and then you go to your room and your room's great, then you go down to another restaurant in town and maybe your service was awful. It pretty much took that whole trip and made it a bad trip. So we want to make sure that we take frontline staff from around our community, our restaurant employees, our hotel employees, and we're going to try to provide quarterly training for them. And the state of North Carolina's Division of Travel and Tourism is going to help us do that. And just tell them about the importance of an experience for an individual that comes into our city. Because if you have a good experience, you tell an average of one person. If you have a poor experience, you tell about 10 people because you're trying to vent. So we want to make sure that our frontline employees that work with us, that represent us, are getting trained as well. So that's an important aspect. And of course, as always, our budget, 1% of that goes to the convention center marketing fund. We do not market the convention center. We use it as a tool, obviously, to attract people to our community. But the convention center has its own staff, and through the interlocal agreement with the city of Greenville, we provide 1% out of that 6% for that purpose. And so again, we're estimating about $295,000 of our budget will go to exhibit hall managers to market the convention center. And of course, they provide monthly accounts of what they're doing. We actually approve their marketing budget, our board does, so we have some oversight on what they're doing. It also helps so we don't duplicate efforts as well. But they inquire and ask us on a monthly basis to reimbursement for their expenses. So we expect that to be about $295,000 over the next 12 months. So it's a pretty straightforward budget. It's really based on marketing, education, training, and getting out into the community and having those one-on-one conversations because you never know who you're talking to, whether they have the ability to bring a tournament, meeting, convention, reunion to your door. So we want to get in front of as many people as possible. So that's kind of a shortened version of our budget, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for keeping your requests flat at zero. When will the renovations be done? There may or may not be a benefit of specific interest to me in August, and I was just wondering if it was going to be.
I figured you might ask that. You know, the convention center got a little bit behind with the renovations, basically because when they were ready to pour concrete, they couldn't because it was so cold here. So they're about two weeks behind from what I understand. So I think you're fine. I think, you know, you were looking at June. I think by the end of June, early July, they'll be ready to go. And I know we've got until August for the association meeting. So that's my latest update, and I'll get another update next week when we meet with them. But we get biweekly updates on what's going on over there. But it's, if you've driven by, it's going quickly. And I know you've got that vested interest too, but I think we're ready to go. Just a small interest in, sir. Mr. Garris, do you have anything?
I don't have any questions, just a couple of observations. First of all, thank you very much for keeping your budget within the occupancy rate, the tax occupancy rate, rather than coming to us, asking us for money from our general fund, which we do not have to give to you anyway. So that's a good thing. And the other thing, I think that the thing you mentioned about training of the frontline employees, I think that is a very, very good move. It's kind of stretching your mission and reaching out into the community. But I think that would be a positive step because people's impressions about a community are created by the treatment they receive from those frontline people. So I think that's a good program.
Well, thank you. And that's the thing, we can be successful, but if someone's not successful down the line, what we did is irrelevant.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. McGowan?
Thank you. So the basic, I appreciate your continuous recruitment of businesses and things that come in and also the Holiday Inn, the new Holiday Inn that's coming up beside, near the convention center. What's the progress on that and what kind of impact do you think that would have in terms of attracting the visitors?
It'll have an, you know, we sell that particular area as a convention center campus. When we go out on the road, that's what we sell it as, is a campus, because you've got three different hotels with three different price points, and they're all within walking distance, one attached and two very close. When we were selling the City Hotel, it was a very nice property at City Hotel, still is, but it's not a recognizable name. People today want, they have reward points that they're thinking about, programs that they belong to. And Holiday Inn is part of the IHG network, so, you know, you're going to get your reward points as an individual if you stay there versus staying at an independent property. Also, you have the reservation system as a franchised hotel. And I think the aesthetics will be a little bit nicer as a Holiday Inn when they, as opposed to the City Hotel. So it'll be easier for us to sell when we say we've got three hotels that everyone understands what they are, instead of we've got two hotels and the City Hotel in Bistro, which, you know, in your own mind, you're going to form an opinion before you even get there about what that might be. So just the brand name, I think, will be helpful. But if you haven't been in there, stop by because it will turn your head when you walk in that place. It's what they call a fourth generation Holiday Inn, and that means it is got all the bells and whistles technologically. Because Holiday Inn, you think sometimes, you know, that was the first hotel franchise, really, besides Hilton. And, you know, older, older property, but this is outstanding, what they're doing. They cut down the number of rooms, made the rooms bigger. It's going to be a great asset for us. And to be honest, we've already have two meeting planners that did not look at us because of that aspect that are now. So I think it'll have immediate dividends to have that. Sure. Just one.
Thank you very much for your report. I agree with Mr. Garris, that needs to be going up to the top because not only does that attract visitors for conventions or conferences or whatever, but that attracts businesses, that attracts new citizens who move in here to go to work here, over going with the same company, maybe in another city. Because when you come for an interview, or you come to meet with real estate people to look for a home, if you're going to stay two or three days, you go to a restaurant, you get good service, you get a smile, you get greetings, you get people who are complimentary of living here and not disgruntled. And you're exactly right. We've all made that decision at that moment about where we are. And like you said, I'm sure it's higher than that 10 to one. But the other thing is, the fact that, I think that even though we don't, you're not requesting money, you still see us as an entity that makes your job easier and we do help. Do we have any idea how much money you all? Do we have any idea how much money you all have gotten from the tax from Expedia?
We do. It's not been significant yet in February, because we're behind. We collect it, so we're behind. But I believe it was just over $1,200 in February and about $1,300 in March.
But we haven't had that in place very long, and it's, you know...
Multiply that by 12, it's significant. Anything, any additional funds is significant.
We're in that position, so we understand. But I was just wondering, I didn't have any idea. Thank you again.
Sure.
Mr. Owens?
Thank you, I appreciate your report. It's always good to receive a report where you do not have to put in money back in from the taxpayers. Many of the visitor centers in many of our locations in the state are a big tax burden on the taxpayers. But there was much wisdom by the city in particular, when the convention center over here was started, to implement this, and the county was a part of it, but we chickened out and got out of it. But the city and the convention center people, it's just a marvelous asset for us, and it's very worthy, and I appreciate you.
Well, thank you. I won't be long, Wendy.
Don't make me regret going there. Take your time.
Thank you for the report. Andrew, congratulations on your relatively recent promotion to executive director. The board made the correct decision. You deserve it. And we're looking for good things to continue with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you so much for the report. I always thought of the convention center as a moneymaker for the county. And then I whispered to my colleague, to my writer over here, and say, "How much money do they bring to Pitt County?" So then he informed me. My question that I wrote down, in your technology, I'm curious about, because if you draw people, how many visitors, do you have a, there is a little spot in a program that can count your hits on the website? And then in that program, it's a question of why are you looking? Do you have some way of producing statistics for potential visitors who are considering relocating from other areas to Pitt County?
Yeah, there's a couple of different ways to do that. We run a web analytics monthly report, which anybody can really do off Google Analytics, and we look at how many people are on our website. Particularly, you pay attention to the bounce rate, which means I came to your website, and then the bounce rate says, well, as soon as I went to that site, I left. I didn't look at anything else. So we look at that. As far as relocations, you know, we're not the first person, someone calls when they're going to relocate, usually it's some type of realtor, but we do get several requests per month, and we keep those requests and count those requests, and they're part of our inquiry report that we have. But the web analytics can tell you some. They can tell you where people are looking from, whether it's in-state, out-of-state, how long they stayed on your website, how many pages they visited, whether they're a new visitor or not. So you get a good idea of what people are looking at and why they're looking at it. So you definitely can use your technology that way. Another way to utilize technology is we're implementing what's called the DMAI Economic Impact Calculator, which will calculate the economic impact of a visitor, and then also our ACT software, which is software that tracks the activity of not only sales, not only meeting planners or convention planners, but also groups and things like that about how often they're coming and so forth. So we've got some different software that we can use to kind of give you an overall picture. And then the last thing that we use is the Destination Star reports, which give us information on occupancy, ADR, which is average daily rate, RevPAR, revenue per available room, over the last 18 months, so we can see trends and things like that about what's going on in the area.
So you make that report to your board?
The report goes to our board, yes it does.
The last question is, community gossip across the street from... City Bistro Hotel, or whatever, is the Walmart that that's going to be closed down and done away with and created as a parking lot? Is that it's a parking lot for the convention bureau, and I'm talking about community gossip?
Yeah.
The question that relates to that.
I couldn't tell you what's going to, this morning I got an email about that same piece of land that says, "I heard there's going to be a public amphitheater there. I've heard that there's going to be an outdoor shopping." I mean, I've heard so many things. I don't know any more than you do. I honestly don't, because we hear stuff all the time, and maybe one out of 10 times it comes to fruition, but it's a...
The reason I asked you, you're the only likely person who's been before us in this whole week about that, that may have, it may have an impact on the convention center.
Yeah. It's all private developer, private, all that stuff. So we're not really privy to that information. So we know when new hotels are coming and sometimes new restaurants, but usually with a piece of land like that, we'll hear several things, just like you do, and we don't have any way to verify it.
Thank you. And congratulations on the award.
Oh, thanks, appreciate that.
Mr. Hammond, do you have any questions?
No, no.
All right, we thank you for your presentation.
Thanks a lot, guys, appreciate it very much.
Good, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, we've got some follow-ups for you from the week.
That we've done research and have answers for you. I don't know if you want to take a break before we embark upon that?
Let's take, let's take three minutes, three actual minutes.
Are we near the end of...
180 seconds.
Are we near the end?
Welcome back. We'll now re-enter our discussions, and this is the portion for board directives and questions. And Mr. Manager, did you want to start?
Yes, sir, my good Mr. Chairman. We've had some items that are, some questions that have been raised in the week, or some information that you've asked for, may help to drive the process, as well as your additional questions now that we've completed through the law of different departments and agencies. So what you have coming for you is a list of questions, we turn the mic on you.
And the first item was, the question was raised as to, in terms of the education funding. Page 15 in the binder, which is that traditional page showing Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College, in terms of the funding that's being requested and the funding recommendation. What I've passed out, you'll find behind, it's the third sheet back in the information we just passed out to you. We've revised this education funding overview and have added the debt service to the, all the capital projects for both Pitt County Schools and Pitt Community College. And basically, for Pitt County Schools, we currently have debt service of 11 million, 11.6 million. For Pitt Community College, debt service of 1.6 million. And basically, when you add this on top of the current expense and the capital outlay and the rent, for each institution, it's a 24% increase in total money per institution. For Pitt County Schools, if you were to take that even to the extent on a per pupil ADM, average daily membership point of view, it'd be an additional $498 per student in the school system on that 11.6 million dollar debt. So just wanted you to see that, that, I mean, and another point to point out is, when we talk about the expenditure overview in the budget, and we talk about how education is the, what page is it on, Dwayne? Here it is, on page 11, where we give the pie chart showing all the different functional areas of county government. And we've always shown traditionally that education is the highest allocation of that pie chart. If you look on top of that pie chart, you'll see 7.69% going to debt service. Technically, if we were to take that pie chart, and that debt service, 7.69 is the 11.6 million I referenced, and 11, and 1.6, it'd even be a greater percent of the overall pie. But traditionally, we've broken debt service out separately.
What percentage of the 7.69 actually would go, not the whole amount, right?
Well, a portion of it, the far majority of it's going to be education for Pitt and Pitt Community and Pitt County Schools. Do you have the breakout?
I know, but I just wondered what that was.
Average daily membership.
Almost 80% of the debt service is attributable to education.
Average daily membership.
So it's like almost 6% of that 7.
Okay.
I did that in my head.
Next, on the list, juvenile detention services expenditures, there was conversation and questions about how much money does Pitt County budget for juvenile services, those who are not housed, I guess the 16 and 17-year-olds in the detention center, but those who are housed in the state juvenile facility. And what finance has done is pulled together about six years' worth of expenditures, five actual, and then the last year, 15, 16, is the budget request.
And we, if, and just to note, we incur these expenses for adjudicated Pitt County youth, whether they're in the eastern juvenile detention center, or if they're housed outside of the county. But if their home of residence is Pitt County, we foot that bill.
An eastern correction is here.
That's that one, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And the majority of what we're paying for are juveniles that are housed there.
On the third item, permit fee examples, this deals with the reactivation permit, and there's, like the last page of what we handed out to you, three examples. The first one is a commercial daycare center, showing when the permit was issued and the different types of permits, and then showing that the original permit fee was $210. The cost to reactivate current would be $100. It says $50 permit, only charged for building electrical. It says the cost to reactivate proposed is 200. If they were to reissue all the permits, it'd be $600 minimum. Then they give a residential example for a residential pool and hot tub, original, jumping down to the original permit fee of 250, cost to reactivate is 150 or $50 per permit, and then cost to reactivate proposed $100 compared to reissuing 325. And then the last one for a site-built home, showing the original permit fee of 253, $50 current to reactivate, and then proposed $100, and if you reissue all of them, it's 625.
I think that, to me, is very beneficial, because when people see a permit fee going up four times, then what I need to be able to do is to tell them that, yes, that is true, however, it's going to still save you a bunch of money. So thank you for that.
On number four, dealing with the sheriff's gang activities, gang prevention activities, I didn't want the board to be left with the impression that there's no gang investigating as such going on. In the past, the sheriff's office has had grant funds that's been dedicated towards gang activities. Currently, in talking to the sheriff's office, they're telling me that they don't necessarily have anybody solely dedicated to gang activities, but as issues come up with gangs, they do have people on staff who have expertise and can address gang activities. I would propose or recommend to you, maybe to consider funding one of the four deputies, and just the deputy by itself, not include the vehicle, let them identify the vehicle within their fleet, as vehicles are purchased, maybe just keep a vehicle. The cost of a deputy would be about $52,260. On item number five, the question was brought up about Blue Cross Blue Shield on the Medicare option for our county employees who are 65 or older. We met with Blue Cross Blue Shield yesterday, did bring up the question to our representative, Stan McDaniel. He has, he's given me his verbal position on it. He's going back in, within the organization to get something in writing. He's thinking that it is not allowed by Medicare, that if you are on the payroll, you have to offer that employee, even if you're to buy the whole Medicare package, you have to offer that employee the same thing as anybody who's less than 65. But we'll get that in writing, get it back to you. If we can take advantage of this, we'll use that as one of the factors or consideration to drive plan costs down. We'd be more than happy to do, implement this if it's allowable, and again, we'll bring that back to you once I get it in writing.
And if I could, since I brought that up, Scott, he's saying that it's not allowed?
That's the way he's...
Our insurance people are telling us it is. In fact, they encouraged it.
Right. That's why I said, when he told me that, I said, "Well, I need it in writing as a position from Blue Cross Blue Shield." So he wasn't really 100% sure on it, but he wanted to look within the organization to some resources and get back to us. He hadn't been able to do that so far. I checked my emails before we...
Can I add one thing? And of course, what I know about insurance is, you know, no matter how much information I ask, it's my understanding that that is Medicare's expectation, that that insurance go, whatever your, even your retirement insurance goes in front of theirs, because I keep mine in order. And I'm not admitting that I'm on Medicare.
Right. One other thing we talked about yesterday with Blue Cross Blue Shield, I just wanted to highlight, we did talk about for the future, for fiscal year 16, 17, that following fiscal year, from what we're in discussion this week about, different ideas they gave us to work with internally, with the Health Insurance Steering Committee and management staff. One thing they gave us for next year to consider, they said that we should consider moving to a division of Blue Cross Blue Shield with our pharmacy benefits, and to elect to use their prime specialty pharmacy. They've said that we've had, we currently in this past year have nine employees who, through their pharmacy scripts, have had over $400,000 in pharmacy costs to our plan, to our self-funded plan. And with their, if we were to elect to go to the prime specialty pharmacy, those really specialized, primarily high-dollar, the highest-tier pharmacy, that they would work with them, they would, under this plan, prime specialty pharmacy actually disperses the medications to the employee, they're overnighted to the employee, they get them the next day. But more importantly, they make sure that the employee is taking the medications. They gave one example of a medication, that the actual cost of the medication was $28,000. We had one employee that I think used this twice, and they're wanting to make sure that A, the employee takes that medication, takes it to its fruition, and also the Blue Cross Blue Shield nurses, managers can help manage the cases, making sure that the employee is taking the medication, seeing the doctor, getting well as such. So we were going to recommend that the county turn that switch on for that benefit. And again, out of 1,000-plus or greater members who enjoy the health plan, you're talking about less than 1% would be directly impacted by this. So instead of going to a local pharmacy for that very high-dollar, or that specialty medicine, it would be prescribed and delivered through this arm of Blue Cross Blue Shield. On the next page, number six, sick leave payback, there was a discussion on that, is bringing it back. To do that would be, for fiscal year 15, 16, it'd be $128,000 to turn this back on. Basically, as you recall, I think it was 2011, we turned the switch off, saying that all new hires after that date would not be eligible for sick leave payback. And we were doing that as a cost-cutting measure, as we created the new base budget, trying to bring costs in line. We also, as you will recall, turned off the switch for employees being eligible to receive longevity. So that's another companion benefit that is no longer eligible for new employees. At this point in time, I do not recommend turning that back on. Obviously, if you direct force two, we will accommodate that and find a way to find appropriations for it. In terms of the next item, a COLA, or cost of living, or I think we more commonly call it the market adjustment, to do a 1% would be $405,000, almost $406,000. You know, we had, we recommend that you do the pay-for-performance, which is the 1.2, 2.4 increases, and there was some concern that that may not touch exactly 100% of all the employees. One thing that we've discovered, we've discovered, I guess, in a good, positive manner, that when we calculated the discount rate changing from 2% to a half percent, we underestimated the amount of revenues that would generate. Do you want to cover that real quick?
Yes. One of the, this is a brand-new approach to budgeting the impact of a reduction in the discount rate. We've never done that as a county. Our initial draft of the budget included a 25% impact of reducing the discount rate. We actually decreased the discount rate by 75%. So rather than the $230,000 that was initially anticipated to positively impact our budget, it should have been 690. So that's some $460,000 additional budgetary impact that that would create.
So with that, technically, we could do a 1% cost of living across all employees in the organization, plus add that gang deputy to the sheriff's office at the same time. So it's food for thought for you to think upon.
Mr. Owens, do you have a question?
Well, I see what you're saying here, but I want to know which is going to be the better for the employee, to go with the projection that you had in your budget or this COLA? The employees are going to get more money, which way? That's what I want to know.
If they receive their pay-for-performance, they would either get that 1% If they receive their pay-for-performance, they would either get that 1.2 or 2.4%.
They will have a more of an increase in salaries.
Right. I guess what I'm suggesting is you could actually have the best of both worlds and turn, turn both programs back on, give them the 1% COLA, plus we already had the money in the budget for the pay-for-performance. So you could, you could put it back the way we've had it.
You're saying doing both now?
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's, this changes your original budget by adding COLA back. Is that what you're telling?
That's correct.
Where are you getting that money, this $400,000 from?
From what Dwayne just explained on the discount rate.
I didn't, I didn't follow that. I got you now. Forget it.
And is that going to be ongoing?
Yes.
Okay. In other words, that's not like, I figured it was or you wouldn't be recommending.
As long as you keep the discount rate at the one-half.
Yeah, I got you. And you need to keep reminding us of that.
Yes, ma'am.
That includes all of the sheriff people, all the detention center, every county employee?
Even, exactly.
Including management and everybody else?
Yes, sir. Even, even you as commissioners with your monthly compensation, every single person on payroll.
Our travel compensation.
Your monthly.
I know you say 1.5 up to 2.5 or whatever that, but just give me an imaginary figure. So if I see an employee, I say, well, you're going to get a 5% increase or you totally combining those two? What am I talking about, Scott?
If an employee met their, their pay-for-performance, their PEP plan minimum score of either the 3.0, the 3.55 that we've discussed, if they were on the lower range of the pay scale, they could get up to a 2.4%, a 3.4% increase next year. And those who are higher on the pay scale would get a 2.2 total. The 1% COLA plus the 1.2, or the 1% COLA plus the 2.4.
From 2 to 5? Is that what you're saying? Am I adding right?
2.2 to 3.4.
Yeah. So you could say 2 to 3.5 or something like that.
But yesterday, we also talked about the reinstatement of for certificates earned for deputies.
That's already in the budget.
Yeah. And what I'm saying, so when you take that and add this to that, that could be for certain individuals.
In a very, very few cases could be, yeah.
Yeah.
But overall, it's the 2 to 3.
2.2 to 3.4.
I think that's a good thing. I think it's going to boost the morale of all of our employees and it's going to give them some hope. Because, you know, people, again, I see the employees are suffering with, and with this, this new percentage that you found, I think it's a good thing. So, yeah.
I think it's a big thing. So, and kind of weighed me on and.
I'm not done on this list, so.
But I'm just saying that that is, you know, a good thing. And I'm still one that's looking for the pay-for-performance. Because, tell us before we move on, the percentage of people, when you do, in the past, when we have done pay-for-performance, how many people, percentage-wise, got a raise? I know that it's high.
What we reported was the range between 95% to 98%. Probably 95 is probably more, more on average, but we've had some years when it's been as high as 98%.
Percent of our employees getting increased when we do pay for performance?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, you can move on. Item number eight, question was brought up about the district park and as to whether they pay stormwater fees. I was originally, I think that was outside the city, but that is in the city. We do pay those stormwater fees. And those are included on the month-to-month utility bill that comes in from the city, and those are paid by the county. Under the list of other items, number one, the detention center, the sheriff had talked.
Before you get to that, excuse me, does that mean then that we might be in line to get some of the stormwater money that comes down?
No, ma'am. It's, it's assessed and collected, and we have no choice to pay it.
I didn't think so. I got you.
Just like the airport authority pays it for all the impervious area at the airport.
I got you.
Detention center, when the sheriff was asked on a scale of 1 to 10, what he, how he would rate opening the detention center, I think his answer was, he thought it should be open in January in terms of need. Based upon that comment and also our discussions with him over the past couple of months, if it were to be opened in January, that would be a half-year's cost at the equivalent of half a penny on the tax rate. That is not in the budget right now. And even if you opened it in January, come July 1, we would still have to come up with the other half penny. One thing that was talked about, the very last bullet on that page talks about detention center additional revenues at 300,000. If he put the misdemean, state misdemeanits in there and derive the income off of that, that could go against that other half of the cost. There are other cost centers within the detention center that had been mentioned that could help defray greatly the, the cost of opening the detention center. But I guess bottom line is, at some point in time, the county's got to open E Block, and that's 96 additional beds. It'll bring the total capacity up to about 600. Whether this bullet is bit in 15, 16, or 16, 17, at some point, it's got to be bit, in my opinion, as your manager. And I really don't see us being able to open E Block at some point, whether it's half a penny in 15, 16, or a full penny, or half a penny the next year and these other cost considerations. It's going to take a tax increase. The thing to balance that against, obviously, is on number two, that first bullet, the Pitt Community College General Bond Obligation. That project has a total cost of almost 1.9 cents on the tax rate, and that will be hitting the following year's budget in 16, 17. So I just present that to you for your consideration.
It only hits if we approve it, correct?
Correct.
They've approved it, but we have to vote to implement.
That is correct.
So ultimately, it'll be up to us.
I do want to remind you, you did allocate or forward to the Pitt Community College a million dollars out of the quarter cent sales tax for the planning, design, architectural work. And as they mentioned yesterday, they've got the documents ready to go to bid this summer. So there, that million dollars has been spent. And I guess if, if there is any sentiment to put the brakes on that project, we would probably need to tell them immediately so they could stop any, I'm just saying. I mean, hearing the chairman say that, that's not my recommendation, but I'm just want to mention that. The million dollars so far has been expended.
I don't think I'm reflecting the majority of the thought I was just asking.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
The other big question mark we have is revaluation, which is also coming up.
And there's actually another, you bring that up, there's another bullet, and that would be the radio and paging project, as that would hit the budget as well. And that is technically probably about a half a penny on that unless we can find revenues otherwise.
Are you saying, I guess my nuance is, that this first bullet under 2017 is going to help defray, number one, if you open up?
No, no, the first bullet.
What you're saying?
The first bullet reflects that in November 2013, a ballot question was put before the voters in Pitt County as to whether they wanted $19.9 million of new community colleges projects built. They've got $18 million going towards the science building. They've got 1.9 going towards the basic law enforcement training facility. The voters who come out and voted on that bond measure on the ballot indicated that they were willing to have their property taxes raised at the tune of 1.85 cents to pay the debt as well as the operating expense to open that facility at Pitt, at Pitt Community College. So that is, that, that first bullet is in and of itself for the two Pitt Community College projects. It is not interrelated to the detention center expansion, opening of E Block. So we have basically compounding projects, pent-up demand that's going to hit us in fiscal year 16, 17, which is a year out from the year, would really be the conversation we'd be having one year from now as we all sit here collectively.
Because they passed that bond.
Right. That bond's effect will be almost 2 cents of a tax increase, but that money can only go to that project.
Correct.
It can't be put in the general fund and divided up by us and how we see that.
And if we could also just reemphasize to the board that, under this new normal that we're in with our economy, we're expecting minimal tax-based growth. Even with revaluation in 16, we're expecting minimal. What we saw this year, we would expect to see next year and following.
So the lion's share of, to echo what Dwayne's saying, so the lion's share of growth we're seeing in the tax base allowed us this year to turn that switch back on for pay-for-performance? Once that switch is turned back on, yeah, you could turn it off in 16, 17. Wouldn't be a very good thing morale-wise. But the growth that we would expect in the next year would help pay for the continuing, sustaining the pay-for-performance. Not any other big expansions or defraying the costs of this Pitt Community College debt or opening E Block or paying for the radio and paging project.
But the E Block could be somewhat of a moneymaker if we get more federal prisoners in there. And there is a cost of not opening the place. You've, it's already built.
Correct.
It's sitting there.
And it's heated and electric too.
It's got to have something, otherwise it will deteriorate. The roof is wearing out. They hadn't even put a person in there. The way I look at it from a business standpoint, that's like having a capital piece of equipment sitting there idle. That's capacity that's underutilized. We have underutilized capacity, and I think if you look at the, the basic numbers, if I remember, the full capacity was 460 inmates, and we get as many as 523. And while I don't really care if they sleep on a mattress on the floor, that's not, they're there because they're not nice people generally. But there's also, I know there's going to be potentially some, some impact. I forget what the organization was, where you may take some of the mentally ill patients out of there and do something a little bit more cost-efficient with it. But the bottom line is, it's just sitting there doing nothing.
Right.
The question, the better question would be, why did we even build it? A case is made to build it, we build it, and now it just sits there.
And technically, according to the architect's projections on the jail planning, they had said we would need another pod to be built and open this year, which obviously those projections were not, totally didn't come to fruition. And the 460 number you referenced is a functional capacity? The actual number of beds is 500, but they're saying to, to house people in a safe and efficient manner, it should be 460. So you have an actual bed capacity of 500, you got 100 beds, it'll take it up to almost 600 if you open E Block. And I think we showed the actual number, on average, the trend line was 485 to 495 actual people in the facility. And that's, that number's above the 460 functional capacity number.
That building, I just had a fresh tour, had electric, it had air, it had computers, and it was being cleaned and maintained. Those are dollars sitting out there.
They do heat it and cool it at a minimal level, enough to, so it's not going to deteriorate so that at some point, when, not if, but when it is opened, it'll be ready to be used.
Mr. Owens, you have a follow-up?
Yes. Response to Tom and to somebody about why they would build it. You know, we all make mistakes. So building, it was probably a mistake because it was under the grandeur that you were going to make a lot of money on the federal prisoners. So that wing was put over there, we're getting fed money to help do it. But it never was a profit-making proposition. Scott standing here got, well, that detention center additional revenue of $300,000? That, to me, that's misleading. Where do you think you're getting that $300,000 additional revenue?
The sheriff is telling us that if we take on the state misdemeanits, the state will pay us $50 a day. I believe it's 50 or 55 dollars a day, that, was it 50 inmates?
You asked.
The sheriff put that number out there, but he was saying.
You been here how long, Scott?
13 years.
You go by and look over those 13 years and show me the revenue you made from a jail, all right? That's another point. The next thing I want to make is, we already obligated on this, well, we haven't voted to raise the taxes to pay that Pitt Community College 20, that's going to be, as you got, 1.8 or probably 2% for next year. Not talking about the, that's 17, if my years are correct.
Correct, yes.
To open this, and the sheriff himself and Scott's recommendation, Tom, has been not to open that E Block or whatever now for the next year. So I don't see why we need to ponder that. If it's the sheriff's recommendation, I wouldn't say it was a recommendation, but he didn't adamantly object in Scott's recommendation to not to open it. So I don't think that's an issue before us right now, but be that as is. I must have missed this. What did you say about the stormwater on the district park, Scott?
That that's a current fee that we pay through the, through the utility bill from Greenville Utilities Commission. It's no additional cost to us. It's already budgeted. We paid it since it's gone in, was annexed in the city.
It's paid through what?
The, the utility bill that comes every month for the lights and the water.
Is that what you got on page 10 of your original budget where you talked about drainage improvement?
No, that was for the expansion of the district park. They want to do drainage improvements so that the drainage on the soccer fields and the trails will run off correctly.
I'm in a different mode now about, about that. We talked about when we were talking about the plans, and the lady wrote a very brilliant and nice letter. Of course, I didn't object to what she said in it, but that you were not going to spend any taxpayers' money. Now, my perspective here, they say that they wanted to approve the plan, give 20 more acres of land to put walking trails and all that on it. Go out there and walk that and tell me if the best use of the space is being done. But I've walked it, but that's a different problem. But at this point in time, if they're going to get additional grants, they said, give us this new plan and this 20 more acres, and I'm going to get grants. Well, let them get the grants for the drainage improvement, and let them get the grants for the greenhouse cleanup. I don't think that ought to be one-time payment, is what I'm saying, ladies and gentlemen.
And all these items on page 10 are not in the budget, per se. They're, we're going to wait until the audit comes in. So if you decide to tell them to seek grants or private funding, you could do that.
Well, you said, you said up here at the top of this recommendation for 5 to 16, Scott?
Right. But what we're saying is.
You're saying you could do it. I'm not.
Right. Depending upon that if the fund balance is truly 1.1% above the 20%.
And now, while we're on that same page, page 10, may I continue, Mr. Chairman? Detention center vans, I understand what that is, but Scott, you helped me. Isn't there, on each bill of cost, assigned to a defendant? Once he or she is convicted, certain funds to pay, dealing with their incarceration and also travel. You might want to look at this, is my point. There might be money coming from that to pay for those vans, if it's a transport. There might be something from the state, because if the sheriff implied they were taking people from here to other places in the state. I don't think Pitt County ought to be in for all of that. My next thing is, do we always, do we already, is this camera system for the existing area that we're using? Or is it for this block E?
This, the camera system, the $120,000 is for the older parts of the detention center.
So we don't have any camera system, doesn't it?
There's the original system that is very antiquated, and in most cases does not work. The newer, the newer sections has the equipment as it was put in when it, when it was open, but the.
You, you see where I'm going in a minute if I ever get there, Mr. Chairman. But, and by the way, I thought that you all presented a good budget. You did what I think this board had requested you to do without raising taxes and giving them most efficient and effective services for the taxpayers' money. But these points I'm bringing out here is going to lead to another point. Farmers market, we going to pave lots out of the farmer's market now for $110,000?
Some high-priced rock.
Well, actually, as I was saying, the $110,000 is only for the, the expansion of the Butler Building itself, not the paving of any, there's, there's no paving associated with that 110.
Wait, Dave, so I can hear what he's saying. Excuse me, Scott.
The paving should not be on that item description. It's just the expansion to expand.
So it's expanding the farmer's market building?
Yes, sir.
Is that, who, who said we needed that, Scott?
Well, the farmer's market through quality extension had requested that. They originally came before you and were going to apply, or they did apply for a grant. The grant was turned down. Thus, we put that project on the CIP. And the farmer's market is obviously a huge success. They, the number of vendors exceed the number of bays available, so that's why it's come before you.
And it's kind of dangerous, excuse me.
They, they have a tent back there now, and there was an article in the paper a couple of weeks ago about that moldy tent. And what you would do would eliminate that tent as you expanded that building.
But you'd also eliminate the vendors who are parking out there in the parking lot.
Excuse me, Bill. Is that just, is the farmer's market just a service to taxpayers or customers? Do the people that sell there paying the money?
They pay a vendor fee. They pay so much to.
Not enough of revenue, is that, okay. Now, let me back up, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Up here about the courthouse interior improvement, this is back on page ten again, Scott?
Yes, sir.
That hundred and twenty thousand, now, you might have told me before, but what is that for?
That is to, right now, there is, there's limited.
The interest, is that what it is?
Right, for screening of the public coming in. There's scanners, building modifications, is primarily the two things.
Now, let me give you and Dwayne one more thing to, to help me with. We've got a, on each bill of cost, a courthouse facilities charge. Money's up to, you, you smiling, you know what I'm talking about, the fund?
Yes, sir, we have the courthouse facilities fund.
Now, there should be, and I remember when there was good money in that. I don't know what it is now, but why not look at that for this?
There, there's good money in there. The problem is, how much total is that?
We, we are, on an annual basis, exceeding the cost of the revenues generated by anywhere from seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year.
Is that a four hundred thousand dollar?
Uh, no, it's about a two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So you're spending, excuse me, you're spending more money than that facilities fund comes in?
Correct.
And it's primary, it's being primarily driven by maintenance projects at the courthouse currently.
Right, but this would fall under the same category of that.
Yes, sir, if we had money, we.
So it wouldn't be nothing wrong with looking there for it, would it? All right, now, one more thing, the, of course, the exterior of the improvements. Again, I know you say maybe this page ten is not within the budget, but I viewed it as part of your presentation, Scott.
Correct.
Now, let's go on down, we talked about, Jimmy Garris, didn't we approve purchase of vehicles for the county six hundred thousand dollars every other year at one time?
I think we didn't.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we're currently.
What is our system on that, then?
We're currently on a two-years, we're two-years on, one-year off replacement cycle. We've just completed two years of consecutive purchases. Next year is a planned off. Sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen would be two more consecutive years.
So you paid one six hundred, six hundred thousand for prior year, and got one coming up now?
Uh, no, sir, we have two active that we're paying on currently. Next year does not allow capacity for a new six hundred, but sixteen seventeen.
Well, where does this two hundred thousand here at the bottom on page ten come in there?
We were.
Is that part of that overall plan?
No, sir.
No, we knew that since next year is an off year, we thought it would be, to be diligent for the sheriff's needs for vehicle replacement, that if there was capacity within this one-time monies, this, this go-to pot we're talking about, that we could possibly do half a dozen vehicles for the sheriff.
So we didn't calculate enough on the six hundred thousand dollar plan, then, is that what you tell?
No, we ca, we, we only calculated as much as we could borrow based upon the funding constraints.
For returning expenses.
We always have many, many more vehicles requested than we can.
Didn't the sheriff say here the other day that, how much money did he get twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen for car purchases? He just said the other day he bought cars this past year?
Yes, sir.
Or this year? Or did I misunderstand that?
Yes, sir, you were correct. Out of the six hundred and fifteen thousand, the regular replacement, we were able to purchase, I believe it was fourteen law enforcement vehicles. They also found additional funds for some additional vehicles. I wanna say, he said twenty-two or twenty-three vehicles that he was able to purchase in this year's budget.
That's all together.
He was able to, out of, out of their, their fuel line item or automobile expense, because fuel costs are down, they had surplus dollars, we allowed them to use those to buy capital. They bought either the Dodge Chargers or Chevy Tahos for the staff.
So you're telling me, then, that the sheriff needed four hundred thousand dollars, two last year, two this year, and that two again?
He, and he would tell you that he needs even more than that.
Yes, sir.
But we got the, there were twenty-two vehicles.
None of y'all see what, am I off-base to stop me?
No, I mean, I think that the plan that you've been implementing is exactly what we voted on, and exactly what's been going on. How many vehicles did they get on the first round of the six hundred thousand?
The same. It, it was the same recurring for the last two years.
So what was the number of vehicles?
About fourteen, approximately fourteen or fifteen vehicles.
So twenty-eight new vehicles from the county in the past two years.
I think that's why you heard the sheriff saying that they're, currently, they're doing pretty good on vehicles.
Well, that's what, I mean, and I'm, that's what I'm hearing, and I don't know that this is necessary, and we did vote on that in place, and I thought that we were very aggressive with that and with the plan, and everybody was on board with it at that time. So, anyway, and I know there are other vehicles.
If you will. Scott, the, the vehicles we just sold, what, six months ago, what, what did they bring?
Five, six hundred.
How many were there?
On average.
I, I would have to pull.
Let me just guess, how many, you said eight or ten, I remember seeing something in the paper about it, or?
Uh, it would, probably under a thou, under a thousand per.
Oh, does that, does that go back into the general fund, or does it go back to the car fund?
It goes back to the general fund.
To the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, and it's not that I, I don't want a sheriff or anybody else that's an employee of this county driving a car that's not safe, and a patrol, he needs a car that's not a hundred thousand miles, we've acknowledged that when we said the six hundred dollar plan. But to me, it appears from what I have in my package, that there's a duplication of it. And if I'm wrong, then you correct me, or if the needs have increased, you correct me, and I'm in favor of supplying the needs for it. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you said you, you might want to wipe this up today, but what I'm getting to, ladies and gentlemen, is, you've come back with this COLA thing, which I think is the best thing, addition you could have made to your budget recommendation that's gonna give the employees an increase, which they deserve and ought to have and do have. But I also have a grave concern as a member of this board, that if what the schools presented to us was a five hundred thousand dollar loss in low wealth, I think this board ought to look at something about, to me, funding for those children is more important than that E sale, uh, Block E block. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Mr. Garris, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say now, about the list you just gave us, Scott?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna take a little different, different view here. The COLA, I am one hundred percent supportive of a COLA if we can afford it. Now, we have already kind of, well, we haven't committed, but we have talked favorably about the merit increase, and I am totally supportive of that. That's a one point two to a two point four percent raise, and, and I realize that historically, that's gone to like ninety-five percent of our employees. That could go to a hundred percent of our employees. There's nothing that says every employee cannot get that merit, correct?
That's correct.
Now, so what I would say to any employee that thinks they may not get that merit raise, or based upon their experience, have not received it in the past, once, if we approve this, if I were that employee, I would go to my supervisor and I would say, you tell me what I need to do to make sure I get that merit increase, because I want to get it. And then I want you to monitor me and tell me whether or not I'm on line towards receiving it, and if I'm not, you let me know what I need to do in order to get it. So, my point is, I believe that a hundred percent of the employees could get that merit raised. Now, to add the COLA on top of that, I would really love to do, but my concern is the affordability of that. Whether we like it or not, at some point in time, we're gonna have to open this Block E. Now, it's, it's been sitting there available now for three or four years, and the sheriff said that he felt like it needed to be opened at least by January of next year. Maybe not the full year, but, but January. We could take that four hundred thousand dollars and hopefully generate some from the Detention Center additions and cover that for the six months of next year. Because, again, we're gonna have to do that at some point in time, and I, I just would like for us to think about the utilization of that extra four hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars that the manager's talked about. What is the best utilization for it? Again, I would love to give a COLA on top of the merit, but maybe we need to phase into those employee increases and think about some of those things that we're gonna absolutely have to do eventually, and one of those is to open that Block E. We need to think about that.
Mr. Blom.
I appreciate the comments coming from my colleague, Jimmy, but, you know, I, I think it's important that we, we look at that cost of living, because, again, as I said previously, everybody is in need of bread, milk, eggs, and the basics, basic necessities of, of life. Now, when a increase such as COLA becomes very subjective, when it becomes that, you know, some supervisors or some directors had, has this thing of a threat over them, people fear. Now, I, I've, I get this from employees throughout this county. Been, I've been a county commissioner for over about ten years now, and, and I, and I hear this. So I think, in fairness, give these employees the, what they're due. Everybody has to live, everybody has to make it, at least trying to make it. These are tough times for people, and, and they have, they are having to pay out, but nothing comes in. So a COLA, you're talking about boosting morale, I think that we, we would do it, and I appreciate the county manager and, and our finance officer finding this money, that it would not hurt the taxpayer. So certainly, I'm, I'm for that, and I, I, I think, again, it's, it's very well taken that we, we pursue this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to Jimmy?
Sure.
Um, this has to come through the manager. Maybe I should have said the manager, Mr. Garris, but Jimmy, we were, been told that the federal prisoners has decreased tremendously. I don't know what those numbers are, and if you could get those, Scott, find out what they are, and also, we, that capacity out there is about five hundred people, five hundred prisoners. Of course, it fluctuates, and as your drafts or graphs you had the other day shows, it's up and down, it's up and down, sometimes high, but averaging out, I, I believe the information we had the other day would substantiate that we've got adequate space right now. Of course, I know he said that January the first or whenever, Jimmy, but thirdly, I'd like for you, Scott, to get me information that show what revenues you're gonna get from the, what's called the prisoner section, the present middle section, the new section, and then go back over the past, you don't have to go back thirteen, as you said, but go back over the last five years, and that'll give you a measuring stick as to what, and I, I believe you're gonna find that that jail is not a profit-making revenue. Thank you.
Ms. Ward.
I, I think everyone knows it's not a profit-making rev, uh, uh, business, but it does generate some revenue, but definitely, it's not profit-making.
The federal prisoners generate about one point eight, one point nine million dollars a year in revenue. We get seventy-eight dollars a day per federal inmate, so it, it does help to free costs.
Ms. Ward.
Could you add to Mark's request the monies that the sheriff put back into the county budget? On my tour, I heard some of that yesterday. They, they put money back based on revenues that they generate out there, 'cause they make money off of certain other things.
Well, from a, from a budget standpoint, I would just say that the rep, the report that we would generate from Mr. Owens would represent what you're asking for.
Would have that in it, okay.
But to say that money is put back would be somewhat misleading, because even with the revenues that are generated, it does not fully cover the cost of the operations.
All right, okay.
Ms. Ward.
Um, if I remember correctly, in the presentation that the sheriff made to begin with, before we gave him an option of, or someone asked the question, it wasn't an option, but, and that was when he came up with the January, let's revisit this in January. Up to that point, it was my understanding in the presentation that we would look at this a year later, the opening of E Block. If, and I agree with what Mr. Owens said, if you look at that sheet, and I don't know exactly where it is, presently, we are not over capacity in the jail, and it has been down over the past few years. It goes up and down, I realize you can always get that high number when people may be sleeping on the floor, but looking at that information, and do y'all know the page, I don't know where it is?
Page twenty-seven of your PowerPoint.
It showed that we were, you know, pretty steady with at capacity and below, and below more than at. So I feel like that if we could just take that off the table and be projecting for January and take at face what was said originally about opening it. The other thing relative to the pay-for-performance, having been an administrator, I understand the process and how hard it is to do it fairly, but when you have a record that shows between ninety-five and ninety-eight percent of your people get a raise in the past, and I know that's what you're relying, relying on as far as your information is concerned, that's very, very, very high for most pay-for-performance. With that said, I'm, I'm still in favor of pay-for-performance. Is it possible that once the pay-for-performance increases have been settled, and if it comes out to be ninety-seven percent, could we give the three percent a COLA increase? Is that a possibility? I mean, as far as the money is concerned?
Let me explain the timing of it. The one percent COLA would be effective July one, the first day of the new fiscal year. The way that the pay-for, pay-for-performance increases work, depending upon what day you were hired, your anniversary date, if you were hired July fifteenth, you'd have your review and it would be effective that day.
Well, maybe we need to let that bottom one percent do a, say, look, I'm not gonna do my pay-for, anyway, I'm, my, I still support strongly the pay-for-performance.
Another problem is, the, if we do a one percent, it would be off the salary schedule in terms of.
Well, I, I understand, it's not a, everybody has had their performance review on X date, and we'll know how many did not make it, so that's fine.
Thank you. I'm gonna take just a moment and ask a few quick questions, otherwise I may not get to. But, um, yeah, I mentioned this to Dwayne on the break, the other day when I was talking about the sheriff's office pay for the deputies and pointing out the difference in some of the larger agencies. I understand the constraints of the budget, and I didn't want to suggest or put it in your mind that I was, even though I would like to be able to do that, I understand that we cannot bring them directly even with the top paid agencies in the county this year. What I was mentioning to Dwayne was, would it be possible for incremental? Because even with the bonuses, the raises that were going this year, there would be a raise at those other agencies this year, and percentage-wise, I think it's one tick lower than what we're given, but it's a smaller percentage on a greater amount, so it either equals or exceeds, so they're still slipping behind in a competitive wage. And, and I understand that, based on sheriff's offices across the state, we're about where we're supposed to be, but I'm thinking, and, and if you listen to what the sheriff said, and I experienced this because they come work with me, they're not competing well in the market they, they exist in. We don't lose deputies to Alamance County or, or counties like that. We, we lose them to the Greenville Police Department, East Carolina University, and the hospital. And it's also been a, a really tough thing to retain females, minorities, because if you're gonna work a dangerous job, you might as well make the most you can at it. And so I was thinking of something more incremental, if, if maybe we could do something smaller, but still make a difference. That, that's the, and I should have been more clear the other day, and maybe do it over several years, or, you know, I think they would appreciate that. I think most people are reasonable and understand that the budget is what the budget is. I think most people are reasonable and understand that the budget is what the budget is, and, and revenues aren't coming in at 6 and 10 percent, they're growing at 1. And, uh, and on, on the PCC thing, I, I will, you know, I've been, and y'all are probably tired of hearing about me, but I'm tired of hearing about some things y'all say, too. So we, we don't have to. I've looked that way enough today. We don't have to do it, that is us voting for a tax increase. I know we say the citizens did it, but it was a municipal year, the, our county residents that live within the city of Greenville, had a very small percentage of that population enacted that or, or passed that bond. It's ultimately our responsibility. And it's not against the project. I believe in the projects. My, my worry is that with the slow growth of revenues, to put a 2 percent, to enact a 2 percent tax increase paints us into a corner. If the jail population explodes, we have to look at a penny. If, how many of these other projects get out of hand, and then we have to be forced, then there, we're looking at whatever that would possibly be on top of another 2 percent already. And I, that's my objection to it, isn't the projects. The projects are completely valid and needed projects as with everything we've had in this book and everything we've had presented to us. The difference is that paints us into more of a corner. And then we're asking pennies after pennies after pennies on top of what may be given in FIRE or EMS if, if that is needed, which I don't think most people might because they know where it's going. So that is, is my objection with that. I'm okay, even, you know, I like the, the cost of living idea, but the people I hear from the private sector, and you don't get that in the private sector, you earn based on your, your work abilities. And, and so I would be a little more amenable to sticking, I do want to stick with the pay-for-performance, definitely. I, I would, it would be nice if we could do a, a cost of living. But if we could, um, again, I know we're all pulling out, out of the same pool of money in, in several different ways, and probably nine different ways total up here today, but I, I would like to see us to be able to apply that money to really push us forward in some areas. And that concludes my comments. Mr. Coulson, do you have anything?
Yeah, I actually have a couple. You wanted to fund the one officer for the sheriff's department that would be, I'm going to say principally associated with gang activity. I, I can't stress enough that I think that's not enough. I really think that he, he was asking for a reasonable amount with four officers. As far as the, the vehicles and all the other things that went with it, I don't know whether that can be taken care of with interagency. But I really believe that you need more, there needs to be more pressure put on gangs. They are, in my opinion, the biggest threat to this community because of the crime that they commit and the, the, we talk about social services and, and kids that come from broken homes and, and so on. Where do they end up? Many of them end up in gangs. And these are not nice people. MS-13, that's the nastiest gang out there. They'll kill you for, for nothing. They don't care. You mean nothing to them. So I think we ought to put more there. I believe that we ought to have a, a three-year plus two-year plan on the sheriff's department that basically says that within three years, we are going to take sheriff deputies up to the rate that the cities and is actually paying now. The other two-year is the catch-up years because they're going to have additional increases probably during that three-year period. So within five years, we could truly be somewhere commensurate with what they are. And yes, I know this is a lot of money, but these people, they put their lives on the line every single day. There's a not, not one of them that doesn't know whether he's going to go home that night. And yes, we don't see a lot of people shot. But, you know, something that, that you had made the comment about the body camera after I brought it up, and you said that you felt like many, many of the outcries for the body cameras has to do with people that don't trust law enforcement. And I'm not sure I fully agree with that, Glenn. I believe that there may be a component of that. But remember, the bad actors in this community, they're looking at Baltimore and they're looking at other areas, and they're saying, whoa, look what we can do, and look what we might be able to get, get away with. So I, I think we need to invest in that type of technology. And even if we don't buy the first body camera, I'll go back to what you had said, where you said, okay, there's more to it than a notion, my words, not yours. But there's got to be some structure for being able to take in that data and handle it. Well, that ought to be planned for and actively developed right now before even buy the first body camera. I saw in the paper, I believe it was today or yesterday or whatever, about the Winterville police, that they have body cameras. So there is at least one organization out there that's, that's starting off with that. Something else I'd like to, and you've heard me say this before, insurance, we're going to go to $626 a month. That's 1,200, I mean, that's 12 months, that comes out to $7,512. Did some quick calculations here. Even if a person only makes 10 percent or pays 10 percent in taxes, the amount of, of that is going to be potentially $750. That Obamacare, and it has been put off for two years for political reasons, but Obamacare makes premiums that are paid for health insurance taxable to the individuals and not deductible to the company. That wouldn't have mattered because you work quite like the private sector. So in my business, at some point, and I'm already telling my people, be braced for this. If they enact this, you're going to be hit with something. Now, why is that important? Let's take a person that makes $40,000 with the county, assuming that they got the major amount of raise that we talked about, COLA and, and, and performance. And oh, by the way, COLA, cost of living, we've bandied about 1 percent, 3 percent. Come on, that's not the way COLA works. COLA is, Jimmy had said this behind the scenes the other day, COLA's, you don't do anything for it. It's the fact that, again, the Keynesian economics are kicking in, a little bit of inflation every year. So the COLA actually covers that. Performance is something completely different. But let's say that they got, between COLA and the increase, 3.4 percent, I calculated on a $40,000 annual amount, that come out to $1,360. Assuming that they pay taxes on that money, they'd end up with about 800. So everything that we've talked about now, if Obamacare kicked in today, they would have, with their raise, they would have gotten an additional $50 a month. Think about that, $50 a month. That's not enough to change somebody's lifestyle. But it is enough for us to be thinking about as to what the impact, what are the unintended consequences of some things that come out of Washington, come out of the state? That will be an unfunded mandate to us because the employers are going to be asking us to, hey, help us make up this difference. And it's coming. With the Department of Social Services, I said enough about that already, but, and, and I know we can't do anything about it because there, again, you're mandated by law, you've got to pay for the people in order to, because it's a locally enforced program. But where does it end? I don't know. I don't like paying taxes any more than anybody else. I do believe that the E Block needs to be opened. I think sooner rather than later. The $78 a day for federal money, I'm not saying it's going to pay for everything, but it will relieve the, the overcrowding. When we put people in a, in a environment for not just a couple of days, some are only in there for a few days, some are in there for an extended period, and it's overcrowded, they've done study after study with rats. And they've discovered that rats and people are not that different. You overcrowd a rat population, and they turn mean, they turn aggressive. And now what happens? Mark, he gets them out of jail, and they come out in a society that doesn't welcome them. We just recently hired a guy at our company. He was walking along the road, my boss, I don't know why, but he just decided to pick the guy up because he's thumbing, and talked to him, and turns out, he just got out of jail. And he had done some things that he shouldn't have done. He wanted to turn his life around. And so my boss said, well, we'll give you a chance. And so we've hired him, and you know what they gave him when he got out of jail? He was from Michigan. I don't know his whole, whole life story. He had $5 when he got out of jail and no place to go. And so when we start talking about social services and all the money that we spend and so on, where do individuals like that go? They go right back into a life of crime. Because the gangs out there, yeah, come on in, we'll be your family. It's a never-ending cycle. And while we can't do anything immediately about it, there are things that we do that if we, if we don't do the proper things now, if we try to lowball it on the dollars today, we will pay for it in the future. And I believe that with all my heart. And this young man is so far working out well, and hopefully he will have turned his life around. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
I don't know everything you just said, Commissioner Glenn, well, about COLA or all of this, but I do know what I have experienced in life as an educated person. And COLA, you might not like it, and you might think that it rewards people who do nothing. It will reward those people who perform and is subjected to something that the supervisor think they shouldn't get because they want to give it to their friends. Yes, I am passionate about it because my whole entire life of working with the degree in the field that I educated myself in through pay, I made less than a janitor at an academic institution. And I am for COLA, and I hope this board can consider that. Yes, I am delivering a sermon because it affects my children, my children. I did not buy clothes for me, Glenn, where I made mine so that my children could not be bullied and done by the culture of society. And I made those sacrifices in due diligence, and I'll make them again. But if we have COLA, at least we can help that family like mine deliver the work because employees, supervisors decided, and there was a sixth grade employee from another country that teased me about making more money than I did, and I had a degree. And I receive insults every day. A COLA helps that. And we need to be sensitive about those kind of people who needs a COLA. And you didn't give them anything all in the past, it wouldn't hurt, cut some of the performance pay, and, and, and give them a COLA. I, I'm for that. I'm, I'm for that. Because look at me today, and I've been retired a long time. Got out because my parents all died off, and I, and now I'm here, and I, I went on retire because I figured the little money I make could feed me and shield me and, and make me live. And I left it because I knew there was no opportunity of increasing because of my education and who I am. Let's give a COLA. Thank you, and I, and I agree with the rest of what you said, Tom, about the sheriff thing and the gangs and stuff.
Mr. Hammond, do you have any comments on the budget for the manager?
No, sir. I agree.
We're, we're just about to get there. I want to say on our pay-for performance, though, the, the structure that the county has, and this is a credit to the management, is not very subjective. It's mainly employee-driven in the goals that are set. It's not set by a standard that the, the employee can't meet, their, their partner in preparing for it. And a lot of that came out of situations that you're discussing, that you're talking about. So in that, I, I just want to be clear that our organization does not and should not operate in, in that way, and I don't believe that we do.
Can, can I ask the county manager one question then?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there some way you can check that?
In terms of.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the two of you.
Well, let me, let me say this. One thing we did not bring out to you is that we do, HR, Human Resources Department, does a random audit of the plans, the interim PEPs and the final PEPs in terms of, A, making sure that they're, that the supervisor has documented the comments justifying the, the performance of the employee to the, the score that's made. And if it's not a strong enough comment, a report is delivered to me on all those comments, as well as to the individual department head that is in charge of their respective PEPs in their departments. On those people that I evaluate directly, if they're not doing their PEPs, well, first of all, we have a conversation about it. Second of all, within their individual PEP as department head, under, and every supervisor, one of their front-end PEP goals is their PEP administration. They are graded on that, A, first upon the input by HR in that random audit for the plan, for the interim and the final, and then, then B, just my observation of how they're doing their PEPs otherwise. So we, we do look at that. HR, Florida Hardy, and, and her, her folks are very interactive with that. So we, it's not like we just launched this program and are just hoping it, it, it works, it works well. We audit it. We audit all, a, a select number of PEPs every year, three times a year.
The only exposure I had to county government and, and, and that kind of thing is, is the Department of Social Services. And the employees don't have an evaluation of, of managers. They are not participatory about manager. A manager can be the worst in the world, and they have no way of putting input into that increase that, that manager supervisor give. You understand what I'm saying there?
Sure. And some organizations do what they call a 360 evaluation where the, the line staff.
You know that social service responded to me like that.
All right, so.
You don't want to create many means me out there.
We, from the discussion I've heard, obviously, it's not going to be over today. But it seems like that the vast majority of the budget we're all together on. I think you've heard some suggestions that each of us have. My request of you would be, out of those suggestions, bring us some options in what the repercussions would look like. Because I'm, I'm open to the, the fact that sometimes my ideas don't work, so I just want to see it on paper. And I think everyone's pretty open-minded about what they think about the budget in that we want to see what the numbers are and what we're willing to do to, to meet the numbers or, or make changes elsewhere.
According to your budget calendar, what, the next step would come, your regular meeting on May the 18th, which would be a week from Monday?
Yes.
I would bring to you the, the manager's recommended budget and budget message, and I guess within that, if there are, can deliver options as, as part of that, that process. I'll deliver to you a recommended budget, and at the same time, hearing the, the collective feedback from the board, we'll develop if there's options, there would be options within that of, of things you could pick and select or take away from.
Just a Reader's Digest version of that since it's available online for everyone to view, and, and it's been covered well in the paper, thanks to Ginger. But just a, a quick overview, plus, you know, kind of a concierge thing, four or five different options based on what you've heard today. And, and then we can, at the most, or do you think more?
No, all I was, no, no, no. All I was thinking was I heard some kind of majority comments on some things, and I, I don't, do you all have enough to go on to come back? Because, I mean, as far as looking at two or three options for these proposals that you have, that's a difficult thing to do at a regular meeting, and I think it's a nine, I mean, that may be.
Six P M.
We'll get out a 6 P M. meeting, and usually, we're in a different place. So I think I'd like to hear from you all if you got enough directives from us today that you could, I mean, were there any things you heard a no own? Were there some things you heard kind of a majority own? And you're going to, and I'm sure that's how you're going to handle it.
My process from this point going forward is that myself and management team will meet and read the 90 leaves in front of us and look for the consensus on the items, and then try to, for me to deliver my, my recommended budget based upon what consensus we feel is, whether it's E Block, COLA, pay-for-performance, vehicles, gang, the, the gang deputies, just all of it, and try to synthesize that into recommended budget, as well as keeping in mind, there may be some things on the side, options. E Block, I'm sure, would be one of those options as such, and then maybe other items.
In this budget?
Well, I'm saying, an option, probably will not be in the recommended budget, but it would be a, a recommended option that if, depending upon how we read the tea leaves on that issue, whether, how that's handled, so.
And just to remind everybody, especially for those who, this is their first process, whatever we hear from the manager on the 18th, we can vote to move forward with a recommended budget. It's not an appro- It's not an approved budget, and changes can still be made, but it's just a part of the process that to move the budget forward, we can't spend all of our time crafting it. We have to move some version of it, it's not going to be perfect. And then when we have the public hearing on the budget on June 9th, I'm sure there will be probably a change or an adaptation or two, hopefully, small. And then we can move on to final approval there. So just keeping in mind that however you vote on May 18th is a procedural vote, not a final vote.
You wouldn't vote, you wouldn't vote until you actually adopt the budget ordinance?
Gotcha.
You may give us consensual direction.
That's what I mean, some kind of direction on what you're going to propose to the public. That's procedural, not, not final. Mr. Owens, did you have one final comment?
I was just going to follow up on what you said, Mr. Chairman. Of course, you know the public here, and I don't remember what dates they are.
Public hearing, June 9th. June 9th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM.
But we've got to be prepared at that time to vote yea or nay.
Correct.
You don't have to, as the chairman said, is the point I want to make. You can go forward with that. But I think what the chairman was telling you, Scotty, you've already made your recommendation of the budget here. You've had two or three or four, whatever, how many you wanted to glean, suggestions in and around that budget. And I think that's what the chairman wants you to bring back to us.
Correct.
And that tweaking will be done at our next regular meeting.
That Monday?
I'll bring back the tweaked budget to you as a recommended budget. No, so we...
We can meet this Monday if you want to discuss this further. If not, we can adjourn and...
Do you have enough time between now and Monday to do that?
Well, again, your regular meeting is not until a week from Monday?
Right.
Monday the 18th? Oh, yes.
We just had, I think the confusion is we have it scheduled for Monday on this, but we don't, we can adjourn.
Yeah. This binder has, has the workshop continuing to Monday, was it the 11th?
Right, additional if necessary.
Could I ask one question? Would it help you all to, and I'm thinking about the time at a meeting that it takes to discuss some of the things that you either put back in the budget or take out or readjust? Because having been there before, usually, and we missed Wednesday of this week, we wouldn't be looking at Monday if we had not missed Wednesday of this week. Would it help you all this next week if we, like Thursday, if we could get back together for an hour or 30 minutes or whatever, so that we could at least hear it prior to the meeting? Or not? I mean, I may be the only one who feels that way.
I'd recommend we stick to the calendar that's been developed in the process.
So no Monday, but the next Monday?
Unless you collectively want to, we'll be happy to do that.
Okay.
Meaning that we would bring, I would bring back the manager's recommended budget to you Monday night, a week from Monday, May the 18th at 6:00 PM.
Right.
The budget. And then I could, we will receive, Dwayne and myself, any additional input as to whether you like it or not, or any additional tweaks you'd want made between that date and June the 9th when we have the public hearing.
If that's amenable to everybody, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So may.
Motion second, let's vote.
Vote day. You don't vote? Move to adjourn, that's what that...
Thank you.